First thing is called order, I did that pledge of belief.
Act my pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did we just do that? Did we just do that?
Yeah. Welcome to the planning commission for tonight. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agendas that is available on the table over there. Agendas and minutes from prior meetings are available on the township website. We will, as I said, it'll be conducted in accordance with that agenda as we may amend it tonight. Other participants here tonight are Brian Ottman, our planning director, Megan Mason Minock from Carlisle Waterman, and Jason Longhurst from Noah and Frost. Next roll call, please.
Ron Ritchie.
Here.
Jason Borsheim.
Here.
Sam Morocco.
Here.
Bill Scarborough.
Here.
David Lamar. Absent.
Yeah.
Belinda Billings here. Joe Suter.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Now, our next item is review of the agenda. I would like to amend it and add one item under I, and that is zoning versus master plant. And anybody else have any changes? How about a motion to approve as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved, or agenda's approved. Our next item is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. We have a few people in the audience. This is a period of time we keep available to receive comments from the public for items, I repeat, that are not on the agenda. If you want to talk about something that's specifically on the agenda, you will be given that time as we get to those items. So, we ask that you limit this to items not on the agenda. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and we will recognize you and you can come to the podium and speak. We'll do it for the members here in the audience first and then for anybody who's online. So with that, I will open the public comment section, session. Anybody out there like to say anything? Don't be shy. How about online? Okay, one last chance. Okay, we got a quiet meeting tonight. Okay, the public comment session is open, it's closed. Next item is a public hearing, Isaac Hanna, file number 2025-002. This is a request for development, redevelopment of a gas station on Sashaba in the Sashaba Town Center Overlay District. Megan, would you like to summarize the development for the benefit of the audience?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Megan Mason Minock, I'm the planning consultant for the township. What is proposed are two additions, each of 1,440 square feet on either end of the existing gas station at 6889 Sashaba Road. That's the northwest corner of I-75 and Sashaba. It's zone motor vehicle service, and that was by consent judgment. And that is something that the planning commission and the public should be aware of. That consent judgment was not only for this, but other places within that condo condominium development. And it mandates the use of it as a gas station, and also the location of the building and the parking in front. Also, because it's a consent judgment, the township board is the only body that can approve any expansion on the site. So normally while something was coming to you as a site plan and a special land use review, you would be the approving body. In this case, because of the consent judgment, it's the township board. With the, and the other reason why this is a special land use, there's two reasons that this is a special land use. They are proposing fast food, both those spaces to be for fast food restaurant uses. That's a special land use in the MS zoning district. And they are proposing on the southern addition for that to be a drive-through. That is a special land use as well. Also, this is in the Sashaba Overlay, the Sashaba Town Center Overlay District, and that requires a special land use. So you have a triple special land use before you tonight. Wanted to note that the conceptual plan proposes a bypass lane for the drive-through window that encroaches on the parcel to the south. And that is zoned, oh, office service two and owned by the applicant. And actually, that parcel is split zoned. The front of it is OS2, the back of it is C2. They're proposing to voluntarily provide a developer covenant on the adjacent parcels of the south, permanently restricting and prohibiting any additional development or uses off of that drive until the zoning is changed. The applicant could also petition to rezone this property or move the building to the north, keeping the development on the subject site. We wanted to note for you that the applicant has previously filed a rezoning application on the parcels of the south. Our firm provided a review, but the applicant chose not to proceed any further with the rezoning. But we feel like this is an appropriate time to address this issue in terms of the use of the property and what's the mechanism for the development going forward as proposed or if not. And we also feel that that plays into the special land use standards that we went through in our review. A couple of things that we just wanted to note quickly is that we feel that the proposed architecture is a definite improvement in terms of, in terms of what's there currently. We've had noted concerns about pedestrian safely, safety, particularly that there's no pedestrian pathway from the safety path directly to a front door, to an entrance. And that's required by the Sashaba Overlay District, but it is also something that, and it's something, something that you routinely require in plans that you see. Also, in the rear, there's a lot going on. There's angled parking, there's a circulation aisle, there's a loading zone, and then there's the, the, the drive-through lane. There are three doors on the back, on the rear elevation. If someone, particularly probably an employee parked in that rear parking, and then we're trying to get to the doors in the back, there's not a clearly marked pedestrian route for them to take. We felt that that was something that plays into the, the, the standards. The other thing, and I'll defer to your engineer to talk more about it, is they are proposing an access route that goes north off of the site, connecting to an access drive that's on the north. That would enable for the, right now, the driveway that has both right-hand and left-hand turns to become a right-hand only turn. And we feel that that's a safer option, but again, deferring to the engineer. I'm sure some of you noted that their parking is more than, the parking requirements are a lot more than what they've proposed. The applicant should talk to you tonight about why they're proposing less of that parking. But what you should know, and the public should know, is that you, the planning commission, may allow less parking upon a finding that such deviations are likely to provide a sufficient number of parking spaces to accommodate the specific characteristics of the use in question. We also noted that a lot of these uses may play into one another. I.e., you may stop to get your car fueled up, then get a snack and get something from, use the restroom and get something from the, you know, buy something from the convenience store. At the end of our letter, we also talked about the Sashaba Town Center Overlay. And one thing we wanted to note was the materials. For, under that overlay, it requires that a single dominant material be selected with a preference for masonry or stone. The dominant material appeared to be aluminum siding, which is not necessarily in the quality of building materials that the planning commission or the township has approved previously in this overlay. We've noted a number of things in our, under our observations that we feel that you should take into consideration during your recommendation.
Thank you. Jason, you have anything you want to add?
Sure. The, I think the, the safety path and the access route are probably the two big, I mean, from our line, so connection to the safety path and the, and the right-of-way. And then for, for the driver approach configured for the existing driver approach, we're recommending that the outbound traffic be reconfigured to be a right turn only, so they can only go, turn right on the southbound Sashaba Road and prohibit left-turn traffic there with the addition of the driveway to the north. For the, for the driveway to the north, I know that, you know, we don't know what the ultimate build-up for that property is going to be. So there, there may be an interim step. You know, we noted that there's a, there's an halt call from the Tim Hortons site that goes through that area that depending on how that property gets configured in the future, you know, it would need to be accommodated in one fashion or another. Right now, it's, it's outletting, you know, via a level spreader. But if that portion of the site gets developed, we may need to reroute that. So just kind of cautioning, you know, whether it's a temporary improvement or a permanent improvement, we'll have to deal with that at some point. We also noted that extensions to the sanitary sewer and the water main are going to be required. The applicants kind of acknowledged those and notes on the plans, but the, the details of how they're going to go about doing that haven't been announced yet. Other than that, the stormwater management, again, has been schematically accounted for. They have provided detention system that meets the county standards, but it hasn't, hasn't been fully designed and detailed out of its form. And that's the, sort of the engineering highlights from my letter there.
Okay, thank you. Just a, a simple question. Is this, this is, as you said, special land use. Is this a preliminary site plan?
Conceptual.
Or conceptual? Okay. That's what I thought, but it didn't say that, and so it is, okay. Is the applicant here? Would you like to say anything?
Good evening, Chairman Scarborough. My name is Jim Eppink. I'm a land planner in the area and also a resident of Independence Township. Our office is at 27 South Squirrel Road in Auburn Hills. I'm here tonight representing Isaac Hanna and the IWH Companies, who is the owner of the station and also some adjacent properties, which I'll, I'll describe in a minute. I'm also here tonight with our engineer, Chad Holdwick, from Green Tech, and Gassan Abdellnor from GAV Architects. Our whole team is here, we, we are all here to answer your questions. But briefly, if I, if I may, just go through about six slides to kind of give you an overview of what we've been doing. We did have a pre-application meeting with the planning department and representatives of the township, oh, probably six weeks or so ago. And we've incorporated all of those comments. Appreciate Ms. Mason Minock's comments and review as well as Jason's. Brian, if we could go to, I wanted to show an overhead. Well, actually, I'll, I'll go back to the first slide. Is, is really what we're proposing here, unlike most site plans that you see, is rather than, you know, a net new site plan, either a tear-down or a greenfield development. This really is, at the end of the day, kind of an expansion of and adding additions to an existing use and a modernization of the building as well as the site. So, as, as Ms. Mason Minock pointed out, we're proposing two additions, one in the north, one in the south, both adding about 24 feet to the, to the north and south of the building. The width of the building will stay the same. And so it's going from about a 4,400 square foot building in total to about a 7,300 square foot building. With that, we are proposing to have two restaurants. We do not have tenants like many, many projects. It's difficult to sign a tenant until the space is ready or nearly ready. But we anticipate those to be some type of a, you know, a, a quick serve restaurant. The one on the north is, is really kind of an in-and-out counter service, pickup counter service. There is not a drive-through. The restaurant on the south is envisioned to have a, a drive-through where the circulation and stacking would be in the back of the building, and it would have a pickup window on the south side. As we mentioned, it's a complete architectural renew. I'll, I'll go through some of the details and invite Gassan to, to walk through the, the materials. I want to, and we'll go into the detail, but just, just to kind of backtrack on the materials. It's, it's really an entirely masonry building, and maybe we need to note that better. About 60% of the front, 65% of the front is decorative masonry brick and limestone. The top panel, 12-foot and above, is, is a panel system. So it's a decorative finished panel system, and that's from the 12-foot point up. It's an 18-foot building. So the, the really from 12-foot down, it's all decorative brick, which we've brought samples of tonight, as well as storefront glass. But we'll go into detail on that in a minute. We're excited, we're going to put in all the modern features like EV charging. We're already working with Eagle, actually has a program coupled with DTE that puts level three chargers. So we're proposing three of those at the, at the north end. We've worked with the Independence Fire Department. They like to see a special type of blanket that we've agreed to purchase and have on-site for their use for any type of fire protection or those type of things. So we're really, again, trying to modernize it. Currently, the property is well-inseptic. We're, of course, going to eliminate the well-inseptic. We'll be connecting to the sanitary and water systems that are located now just above Tim Hortons. Now, Brian, if we could go through kind of the, the layout of the plan. We're to the south here, as you know, immediately south is the entrance to I-75. We then have the Tim Hortons and the, the Stub Street entrance drive off of Sashaba. Those are all my points I just went through, so I won't go through them again. But this graphic at least starts to talk about a little bit of, of what we're doing. Is adding to the north and south of the building, actually moving the driveway at the rear of the building to further west. And what that'll do is create an extension driveway that goes around the back of the Tim Hortons and links into the Stub Street driveway that's there now. This came out of our pre-application meeting with the township and the township stakeholders, and frankly, I think was a very good idea. What it does is it provides another access point in and out of the site and takes advantage of that Stub Street. I'll say this, that the, and it, and again, Mr. Chairman, as you point out, this is a conceptual site plan request. As we get into final site plan and final engineering, what we're proposing is that location, and we're proposing this to be a permanent construction of that driveway in terms of engineering standards and everything else. What we, what we're saying is it may be a temporary location because as the additional western parcels may get developed sometime in the future, there are no plans, there are no concepts at this point. But that road configuration may change, but with the commitment that there will always be a direct access from this gas station to that exit. You know, it may, it may end up having a T at the top of it to, to allow other cars to go further west, for example. But at this point, it certainly will be built as a permanent road that may be reconfigured at some later time, which all, of course, would come through the planning commission. These plans are in your packet. What, what we're saying is, again, that we've got a, a direct access from the north coming around to the south. That would allow cars to get both in and, and out. In your packet, you'll also see truck turning movements so that we know anywhere from a, you know, a beer delivery, Pepsi delivery, or a gasoline hauler, we'll be able to make those turning radiuses as well and be able to, you know, safely deliver products in and out. Obviously, because of fire safety standards, that road or driveway would be built to fire standards as well as gas hauler standards. So we think it's a good addition and a good access point for this. Right? Dimensionally, we've provided all the dimensions from a conceptual site plan point of view. The Carlisle report points out correctly that, that we are asking for an extension to the southern to encroach approximately 12 to 15-foot of the circulation driveway onto the adjacent parcel. We'll go through in a minute, but that adjacent parcel is owned by Mr. Hanna and his company, so it's, it's under the same ownership. What we're proposing is, are two things. A cross-access easement so that cars can travel from one site to the other. That's something we have throughout the township, even including this gas station to Tim Hortons, then Tim Hortons to the access drive. So it's not unusual to have a cross-access easement among properties. If that southern parcel was ever developed, it doesn't have direct access onto Sashaba, so it would need some type of access easement eventually as well. We're also proposing, as it was indicated, a self-imposed restrictive covenants that would prevent any additional development on that site until it was rezoned to any number of different zoning options. Likely, probably not MS, because this is MS, but all the other surrounding parcels are OS2, so more than likely it would be that. But, but the reason we're not proposing a rezoning right now is because frankly, we have no other plans for the adjacent parcels. So I think it'd be premature to rezone it and then potentially come back in five years and say, hey, we want to rezone it again. We, we believe that that restrictive covenant gives the township the ability to say, hey, until we get the zoning changed, until we get a site plan for any additional zoning, all we're allowing you to do is that shared access easement with the driveway. Right? From a property point of view, and then you can just quickly switch to the next slide, please. Mr. Hanna and his companies own all the adjacent parcels. And so when we talk about in terms of, of access to the, I always wrongly call it the Tim Horton driveway, but it's, it's that shared access easement. Mr. Hanna actually owns that and grants an easement for use to the Tim Hortons. As I said, also owns that southern parcel. Brian, if we could go to the next. From a zoning point of view, it gets a little messy. We've got a combination of the, the gas station is motor vehicle service. The, the, I misspoke, the front parcel is OS2, and the balance of the remaining rear parcels are all C2. So they're largely commercial with OS2 in that split zoning. Kind of unusual that one piece of property has two zonings, but that's what it is there. And then Brian? And that's how you can see how they, they line up. Our shared driveway to the south would go over that OS2 parcel, but nothing else would happen until it was either all converted to commercial or something else in the future. Right? In terms of architecture, as I said, from that 12-foot down, it all is all entirely masonry, storefront glass, and the bottom nearly three-foot is limestone, as well as limestone all along the main window. Gassan is here, his firm has designed it. We've brought brick samples, so we're certainly able to share those with you. Some of the branding, as you know, has already been updated, changing over to a BP in the last year, and the canopy has been updated. You see, just in this, and I think maybe in the next, we're, we're planning and proposing to extend the architecture improvements out to the canopy where those columns will be wrapped in the same masonry brick material so that the, the whole property is brought together. That same brick extends down the side, and then it's a decorative split-face brick in the back. So again, what we're, what we're asking for tonight is special land use approval. As Ms. Mason Minock pointed out, it's, it's technically through three. The Carlisle report did a nice job of going through the 10 different qualifications for an overlay zone. Are many issues, essentially, they, they all point out. I'm just going through my notes. I do want to go back to just circulation for one more time. We did provide a traffic study. We are glad to be proposing the northern entrance exit point. We are not proposing, nor do we want to impose a right-out turn. Our feeling is, is that, and our traffic study shows that a majority of the people that are going to be traveling north, north or onto the highway or further down Sashaba will use that exit as I think we would expect them. We also think that a majority of the people will quickly see that it's going to be an easier route to go around the back of Tim Hortons and out to the, out to the southern, northern driveway. I'm getting my north and south. The northern driveway to turn north, make a left there. To turn south, you'd make a right at the normal driveway. We don't want to impose that right now because we have an awful lot of customers that, that know how it works well. We think that this will be a clear addition, certainly with truck traffic. I think we'll see that all the trucks will exit to the southern, to the northern driveway and turn north there or come back right. But that was the one note that I wanted to respond to based on Jason and Megan's reviews. With that, we're here to answer questions. We'd appreciate consideration for special land use for conceptual site plan. We know for sure that there's still a lot of detail that has to come into the plans, things like pedestrian access. We know we can accommodate. We would ask that those get approved as conditions, and certainly would come back and show you all that at the, at the final stage.
Thank you. Brian, can you go back to one of those slides that showed all the parcels that Mr.?
Hanna. And, and by the way, Mr. Hanna is on Zoom tonight, so he can show us as well.
So is that, is that the entire condo area that is encompassed? That, that's all of it?
Yeah.
And, and is that all covered by this consent judgment?
I believe the parcel to the south is, actually, I think all of them do, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. And you're, I just want to dig a little deeper on those cross, those easements that you said you would do. So you'll, you'll provide an easement on the parcel behind Hortons? Cross easement for access both ways?
Correct.
And, and, and will that easement be granted? I mean, I, I have to look, I, I, it's very convenient that Mr. Hanna owns it all now, but that could change. So will, will it be granted to all the users of all those parcels to use that road? And, and the same thing with the easement on the southern piece?
Uh, it, that's a, that's a good and fair question. I would assume, and I guess we'll work that out with you and with the township, but, but I would see no reason why not to do that. As we said, that location may change based on future development of the, the remaining of those parcels. So it would make sense, and I guess I would commit that, yeah, it would, it would, it would grant that parcel, that let's call it western and the southern parcel, shared access. So if that parcel was sold, it would be an easement that would run with that land. And therefore, I guess it would encompass any future uses.
And same thing on the southern parcel?
Correct.
And on the southern parcel, I don't know how you do this, but you've proposed some landscaping along there with, with. My concern is if you develop that southern parcel, it'll get developed up to the edge of your little road, and that landscaping would go away. We'd still like to maintain a buffer between the two parcels. So would the easement be worth it so you could, it would cover that buffer area too?
Well, I, I guess we'd have to look at the ultimate site plan. My, my thought is, and I think we're showing a few trees on that southern side, not really a buffer as much as more just decorative landscaping. And if we, if we, if we were to put, you know, three or four, six trees there, and in five years from now, that site gets developed through the planning process, I think we certainly would commit to, to either relocate or replace those trees on the site. But we didn't intend that to be a buffer as, you know, the, the ordinance might envision a buffer between uses. They, they presumably will all be commercial uses at the time, so they wouldn't require, uh, you know, a buffer as if it was residential or something like that.
Anybody else is, uh, along as Mr. Eppick's at the podium, anybody else have questions for him?
I was a little bit confused about access back and forth at this point. What were you thinking in terms of where it would be located? Like, this is traffic going one way this way. You know, people leaving here, I guess, to get access would be taking drawn out this way, which is very congested. It seems to me it's right by the pumps. You can't go this way, just one way.
That, that southern purple area is not, there's no development planned on it. However, when we put the addition on our southern part of our building, and then we add a drive-through lane and then, um, it's, I guess they call it an escape lane. So basically, two lanes of dra- traffic, both traveling in the same direction, the needed width for that pavement bleeds onto that southern piece by about twelve foot. So there's really no traffic that'll be leaving that southern area. It's just traffic that'll be driving either from the drive-through pickup window or around the back of the building, um, and making a complete loop around. So it's really not adding any extra traffic. It's just simply an easement that would allow us to put pavement on that adjacent parcel. It's owned by the same person.
I misunderstood. Then there, there won't be any development on that southern piece which will generate traffic going north into MS stop or whatever.
That, that's absolutely correct. And in fact, we're adding a covenant, uh, that would restrict us from any development until the zoning was changed and a full site plan would come back to your planning commission for any future development. And then, then all that would be analyzed as well.
Okay. But again, I'm not worried about too much about the zoning of it. I'm worried about the traffic in it.
No, won't generate any traffic whatsoever. There are no uses. Nothing's going to be built. It's still going to be, uh, you know, kind of a mowed lawn area. No, not forever. Uh, it may be developed at some time in the future, and that's what that restrictive covenant says, is that, that it will not be developed until it, the zoning is changed and it's, it's likely not going to be OS two. A site plan would come. I can say unequivocally, even though I've drawn many, many things over the years, it's changed ownership. There's no plans at all for any development. Now, that could change in six months. It could change in six years. But, but, uh, we have no plans for development, but certainly it will be developed at some point.
Sam?
I had a couple of questions for somebody. Why aren't you just changing the property boundaries? Why would we do an easement instead of just, uh, taking that parcel and making it permanently part of the gas station?
Well, a, a couple of reasons is when that does get developed sometime in the future, there will almost certainly have to be splits and combinations. And just like across the street or any other development, if there's multiple users, there'll be partial splits within each of those phases and so forth, not knowing what those phases will be and exactly what the configuration of those are. You could convince me that at one scenario, maybe they all get joined as one parcel, and others, maybe they create others. So rather than get into creating legal descriptions, you know, fairly arbitrarily, it made more sense to us to, to have a cross-access easement, just like we've done adjacent and other areas throughout the township.
Okay. So I'm going to ask you, why wouldn't we make them make it one parcel?
You could make them, make them, you, you could request, you, you could place a condition on the special land use that it be combined into one parcel. The tech, or that the, merely that it's a boundary line that's moved. I think you could place a condition on the special land use to move the boundary line to encompass the site, all of the site that they are proposing to develop. The technical aspect of that then is that there would be a small sliver of this property that would still be zoned office service two. And then, um, we're in a, I, I would have to look at, look into it more deeply about how that split zoning would work and whether, if there's a split zoning, whether one's dominant over the other. I think probably if you are uncomfortable with this scenario, it might be better to, also, the other options are that they could pull the building back, um, and, um, or they could.
Let me tell you my concerns, you know, is that I want some, I would like to see some buffer, some sort of vegetation come around the corner of the building. We're not interested in seeing this building from the highway because you can't. You'll see it. The canopy's higher than anything we would ever plant once you get off the expressway. It's the town center area, so it's an ugly abandoned corner, and a lot of it's due because it's part of the, it's, um, MDOT's property. So that's never going to look nice, you know? Their landscaping suggestions are only in the front of the gas station. They don't encompass anything coming around the corner of the building. So I'm not, I'm not as, I mean, I'm, I, just saying that there's an easement so they can have asphalt there doesn't ensure us any sort of vegetation, any sort of buffering, any sort of,
No.
You know, anything pretty to put, any screening.
Screening. You've got headlights shining right on the exit right there too.
So that, that's, that's one of my concerns about that, is I don't think that the easement makes the property, um, as conducive to properly landscaping it and, and making it what they're asking to do, which is a lot to this property. So that's one issue why I brought that up, you know? Carrying the landscaping and the design standards around the front, and I'm not saying put the fence with the stones all the way down around the corner, but there could be vegetation and trees and something that looks pretty around. If you go back to slide one that they're proposing, see through the pumps, that thick woodland right there? Are you putting that in? I know you're not going to, but, you know, when you look at it, you see that there's all those trees alongside the gas station. I know it's, I'm just joking, but.
Go to the previous slide, though, and there's the big tree right here in the left, so.
So there, so, just to make the point, I know they're doing it the way they're doing it, but it's very barren right now.
Right.
And although the building's being prettier, getting prettier, and I do agree with that, and I appreciate that, I do. And I think we mentioned it in the subcommittee meeting, Jim, that, that we might want to have a little something around that, just around that soft corner in the front and landscaping.
Well, we are proposing significant landscaping in the front along Sashaba to meet the overall standards.
It's kind of in front of the canopy. It doesn't really kind of give you that corner.
It's the, we, we can't landscape on the, the MDOT property, and it's, you know, you can see the shape of the property there. I think that, that Mr. Hannah certainly would consider adding some, some trees along that, uh, the southern portion buffer, uh, along the MDOT property. Now, there is, you know, a great change in everything, but, but, um, what the ordinance doesn't call for and what we wouldn't want to do is provide, you know, a significant buffer right up against that curb line because if and when that southern property gets developed, it would be disturbed. It would make more sense from a commercial development point of view to, to put the buffering at the outskirts of the, of the, the, the commercial zoning area, uh, which would be adjacent to the MDOT property, not adjac- not immediately adjacent to this property.
Well, that kind of is the concern, is that we're talking, you know, we don't want to put vegetation there because we would tear it out. But if we, if the property was actually the right size that it allowed vegetation next to the escape road, it wouldn't be tore out. It's at risk of being tore out because we're asking to have vegetation planted in an easement, not on the boundary of the property. You know, is, if you, does that make sense?
Yep. I know. And something else that'll help bolster what you're talking about is there is the, if you go on one of the slides, there it shows the detention pond. And it's, it's a little more to the west, uh, like it's purposely not on this property. To me, if, if had the detention pond moved onto this property, uh, then develop the property behind that. Keep going down one or the other. It's in the packet. It shows the detention pond.
Yeah, that's what that temporary road was.
Probably the lar- the larger site plan, probably, Brian, the sketch.
That's what the road extension takes you to that detention down there in the back.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, but it's, it's to the west right now. To me, move it to the east, put it on this property, but then that'll allow you to, uh, landscape it correctly and everything stays there like it should.
Right now, we are showing the detention basin on that southern property, knowing that as these parcels get developed, there'll be, and Mr. Longhurst pointed it out, there'll be some type of collective drainage system for all of these parcels. So currently, right now, it's being placed on that southern area. That too may change as those parcels are developed, not unlike across the street where there's temporary detention basins in there now, and, and those will be moved as more development happens. So, um, we, we just can't say where that detention is going to be, Mr. Ritchie. We know obviously this, this property will have to detain. It'll do it as a collective group of properties. But that may change as well.
I guess to get to Sam's point again, uh, I know every property that's built, uh, by the expressway, they want to clear cut everything, so your building is seen. And I guess you're looking at a panel of people that, we don't want to see your building. We want it covered up with, with the landscaping.
Well, and as I said, we're, I think we'd be more than willing to look at creating a, you know, a planting along the, the MDOT property line, the southern property line, which frankly would give you a better angle if I'm down in my car on seventy-five to help block that view.
There's going to be a row, a screening row, at least for those aisles. You got the, you got the, uh, stacking aisle, plus you got the drive-through and the, and the unloading zone. All those could have potential headlights that are on, uh, for people that are coming off the exit, uh, that'd be shining right in there. So to me, that, all that area needs to be screened for any headlight, uh, leakage out to the exit lane.
Okay.
Let me talk about parking and see where we go with that. So justify to me how we need seventy-three spots, not including the gas pumps, and how the back parking is going to be basically all employees only. So now we're just limited to the thirteen spots against the building that aren't handicapped.
So, your requirements are based on the zoning ordinance, um, that are listed in the letter. Um, I think that, so, and when, so those do add up to a significant amount. Both these spaces would require twenty-five spaces, and the retail requires twenty-three. I think that's up to the applicant to justify to you why they should have that reduction. And if you feel that it's underparked or overparked, you can go, you can, you can work your way from there.
And the, the reason I'm bringing that up is say that, um, the required seventy-three spots, I'm going to count twelve employee spots just because of, that's what I'm going to use as an example, the ones in the back, which are not conducive to get past the semi-unloading and the stacking. So let's say that's employees. We're not putting petition, parishioners, or not parishioners, but, um, citizens or, or, I don't know, customers, customers, okay, uh, in the back. So that's, you know, by design, let's say, that's employee parking. So that helps alleviate a little bit of that, uh, congestion that Jason had alluded to and the, the safety of costing the parking lot. If we need more parking, it needs to go on the south side of the building because there's nowhere else to put it. So that would then, where the, you know, off the escape route would be additional parking, which would double as the road to the additional parking, would be the escape route outside the drive-through lane. And then that would be, uh, then that would, parking could be buffered, if at all. So I'm trying to decide, you know, they're trying to save this little tiny parcel, which I understand, but between stormwater and parking, are we really, i- is it savable, or does it need to be consumed with this parcel to make all of this density work? In that spot is what I'm trying to get to. So if parking for the commission, this, you know, if Jim and them can't justify how we're, you know, thirteen spots is going to work with two fast food restaurants and a party store, then that changes the, you know, the discussion of the site plan. So I'm just, I want, I think we should talk about parking, so, first, and see if that takes us anywhere else, is my opinion, you know?
This reminds our processes is that, uh, that, uh, southern parcel needs to go with this and complete all that. Anything you do to the other parcel, you know, could be, uh, used some other way, so.
Jim, do you? So in terms of parking, uh, we've got about eleven or twelve spots out there now. In addition to fourteen spots at the pump, and I think we all know that when you get gas, it's certainly not unusual that you get gas and then close your car and go in and get coffee or whatever. So, uh, uh, currently, there's, there's eleven spots plus fourteen. In terms of our employees, um, typically, the retail store would have two employees. The, each, uh, fast food would have between two and three, so let's say three at any given time per restaurant, plus two in the retail. So that's a total of eight employees that would, you know, be there pretty consistently, obviously. With the spots that we're proposing, we're proposing thirty, uh, uh, plus an additional fourteen, so we're, we're at forty-four parking spots or places to leave vehicles if we cast, count the gas pumps currently. That's compared to, um, if I add that together, twenty-three, so we're essentially doubling the parking. Our restaurants, as we said, one is going to be really a quick serve pickup. One is going to be a, a drive-through. Both of them will have tables, but ni- neither of them are really intended. We would think that, uh, you know, in total, there might be eight or so tables, or eight to ten tables. Let's assume six are occupied at any given time. So if I take the total of eight employees and six tables being parked, that's twelve. That still leaves me forty-four, I'm sorry, forty-four total. That still leaves me, um, what's that, thirty-two? Thirty-two spots that can come and go. Based on what Mr. Hannah has tal- has told me, he has, uh, similar locations like this up and down seventy-five. Thirty-two available spots at any given time really is ample parking. Based on the subcommittee meeting, uh, we pushed that parking back in the back and to allow loading. So we've got a lot more circulation in the front than we had in some of our early concept plans. We're in complete agreement with, uh, enhancing some of the striping for pedestrian circulation throughout the area. But from a parking point of view, um, we're really confident that that forty-four is ample spots.
Megan, what is the counts that we use? And we don't know what kind of restaurants are going in here.
So the counts that you use, um, are for fast food and quick serve, um, drive-through or not. And I will say, in my professional opinion, and also in talking to Dick Carlisle, your parking requirements are generous and may lead to overparking. They're, so they're pretty high. In terms of what the applicant has offered, I think that the, I would recommend that the planning commission have some assurances on paper in terms of what's being proposed, i.e., showing a floor plan for the proposed additions where it shows where counters and where tables would be, so you can see really in concept how, how much, how, how many people are sitting down to eat and how many are not. Also, to have data from the applicant, um, who owns similar places on terms of, you know, is it the same size? Is it the same uses? You know, what are their parking spaces? And also, they know what the parking, what, how the parking happens on the site with the traffic that it gets right now. So I think those are all relevant data that could be brought into the decision, and then for you to have something on paper that backs up whatever findings that you, that you're going to make.
Because my concern is that, you know, this is marketed towards transient people, you know? The drive-through is for the people that are traveling that want to eat in the car while they're driving. The other restaurant is not, you know, is going to be more conducive to somebody trying, wanting to take a break.
Right, and the.
So the amenities we've seen at gas stations that have been proposed or things, there's other amenities for these travelers, which this has none. There's not even really a green space for them to go sit at a picnic table or do anything, you know what I mean? Because it's all asphalt. And the, the northern restaurant is my bigger concern because it's a sit-down. It's gotta be, it's, it's, you know, to say it's a, a fast food carryout for travelers, I mean, I've done my fair share of travel. I mean, I've done my fair share of traveling. A lot of times you need to, you want to sit down. So to say that everyone's going to just run in and grab something and take off, you know, and leave, I don't know how you get something on paper to prove how that works, you know what I mean? And on the other side, um, even though it's a drive-through and if you're traveling, if it's the market, it seems to be, and you pump your gas, I mean, I would pump the gas and then I would park the car and stretch your legs and go inside, you know? It doesn't mean I'm going to leave it at the pump while I'm eating lunch, you know what I mean? So, I understand what everyone's saying, I just don't know, I can't, I can't prove that's really practical, that that's how it's all going to work out, is that, you know?
And then, if you feel uncomfortable with it, you wouldn't move forward with this at this time, as it's proposed to you?
Well, and I'm not opposed to it, I just think that, you know, there, the southern parcel, uh, allows for some options to make it more palatable. But if they're not, well, you know, if we're not talking about using that or adding more parking or green space or anything like that, then it's different. I'm just throwing all of it, trying to make it work. If that property to the south is, um, pretty much useless for anything other than stormwater because of its size and being, and its topography, then, you know, that's up to these guys, whether it makes sense to make this a, a, a nicer, you know, um, project, you know, as a stop off the highway, you know? Um, that's, so that's, Jim?
Mr. Chairman, may I respond? Brian, if you could switch to the next slide, please. I think it's unfair to say that there's no, you know, that it's not a nice project, that there aren't things. Um, meeting the Sashaba overlay standards, we are proposing a plaza out in front and enhancement to the sign area and all the landscaping there. So there are green spaces and places to sit outside, so should someone, you know, choose to stretch their legs and, and sit outside, uh, there'll be benches there, they could even eat out there, you know, as the town center kind of envisions to get people out to Sashaba.
Are you referring to out by the road?
Correct.
The rectangle area.
The rectangle areas of plaza with benches and bike racks.
I mean, I get the, I mean, that's a tou- that's a, that's a tough spot, that's a tough spot.
Mr. Morocco, as you, as you know, that's the overlay standard, to have that.
I get it, well-
So, if we want to, you know, we're, we're, we're working hard to meet the Sashaba overlay standard. We think we've done that, we think that's a good spot. Um, I mean, there could be discussion whether that's an appropriate, um, overlay district in all parts Sashaba, but it is our, our standard, uh, and we've met that. So, people, you know, the, the overlay standard is, in fact, specifically talks about creating plazas where people can sit along Sashaba or take a break along the safety path. And so that's what we've provided, and I think it does a nice job. The parking, um, you know, in, in, in our estimation, um, in our experience, works very well. I agree with the planner that, that Independence Township, not like many, oh, every city and township, uh, typically parking standards are a little antiquated and overparked, and we, you know, create those Kmart parking lots that are huge every day but Thanksgiving. So I think all communities are trying to right-size their parking. Uh, given the, um, you know, it kind of the mix of uses, this is kind of a quintessential mixed-use development, as it were, in terms of there are different people coming here for different reasons. Very, very few people, it'd be interesting, I'm sure we could find out, very, very few people are here for any length of time. I mean, we all stop at gas stations many times a week, and I would guess, even if I'm getting a sandwich, I'm there for less than fifteen minutes, so there's, there's an awful lot of turnover. Um, uh, you know, our, our, our studies, or the data we've, we've shared, um, you know, show that that parking is appropriate. I'm sure that if, if, uh, you know, this, this place, for whatever reason, is wildly successful, the first thing the applicant is going to do is come in and say, hey, we need more parking, and work with the township to amend the site plan and get more parking. But I'm hesitant to overpark it and over-pave it, um, based on, on data that's not there.
Anybody else?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, I noticed in the front, um, the parking is up to the building. And in the back, there was a concern about pedestrian traffic going across the stacking lane. Why can't those be flipped? Why can't the parking be up near the building and the drive-through out there by the?
Stacking lane could definitely be out there.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's an interesting question.
How do you cut through the stacking lane, then?
Well, you wouldn't have to, because the stacking lane would be further west.
Put the stacking anywhere where the parking is and move the parking up against the building.
Right, but when you leave the parking against the building, you'd have to drive through the, the stacking to get around the exits.
To get to the escape route.
And, and, and you'd also have the, the, um, you'd be backing into the delivery zone area as well.
What is that hatched area?
That's the delivery zone.
For semi deliveries, where the semi can park to unload product for the restaurants.
I, I couldn't see on your plan, what is separating that stacking lane from that delivery zone?
It would be a curb.
It's a Sunday curb.
One of those probably twenty-four inch raised curbs.
But then the guy that's unloading his truck's going to have to do what?
The-
Pull his dolly over a twenty-one inch curb?
No, 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 the sidewalk, uh, you know, he would, it's a one-way direction in the back going south, so his cab would be towards the bottom of the screen, and then the back of the truck would be towards the top. He'd unload his truck, and right where that last car is stacked, that's a ramp, and then a sidewalk going back to those delivery doors.
Well, to pick up on the point Megan raised about, uh, pedestrian pass from, from that back sidewalk to the parking area, um, and Megan, you're just, you're talking about some kind of marking on the pavement that it's a pedestrian.
Yes, um, marking on the pavement, but then, and then that marking on the pavement would likely affect the stacking spaces as well, where you're showing them. Because ideally, they, you can't control everybody's behavior, but ideally, they wouldn't stack over the pedestrian crossing or crossings. Um, but really, it is just a demarcation, probably paint on pavement.
Well, and it, it seems to me that they should have that mark, marking opposite each back door, because somebody coming out, um, the back door to get to their car at the top end of that parking spot is not going to walk all the way down.
Mr. Scarborough, there, there's, excuse me, I'm sorry, there's actually going to be lawn or landscape there, and that sidewalk would go parallel. So, yes, I mean, unless they cut over the lawn and, you know, avoided the truck, uh, the safe thing in the directive would be to walk along that sidewalk and then cross at the top.
Okay. Joe?
Just some observations without suggestion. This property line here, well, a couple of things. What if this is sold down here? And that's a whole different story you're going to deal with. This line in, in easement, or if it was sold, gives absolutely no possibility of expanding parking at all, zero. I don't know if you want to be in that position or not. Everyone's saying we got enough, but what if we don't? There is no chance to expand parking with that line sitting there. If this line is down here, how far does it have to go to provide some opportunities for doing some other things? You know, more buffering, more landscaping, more parking? And how far down does the line have to go before this piece of property is totally useless? So why isn't it combined now? In one big piece of ground.
How much space is there between the proposed easement and the, the, the MDOT property?
Brian, maybe one of those aerials might show that?
Yeah. I, I also want to emphasize, just, I, I would not recommend a condition of s- of special land use approval to be combination of this parcel with the parcel to the south. The only thing that I would recommend is that you could require, as condition of special land use, the boundary line to move, to cover what they've proposed to be developed at this point. Also, looking at the ordinance, and this is a question for the applicant, if those two parcels were under common ownership, at the time of this ordinance's adoption, they could be seen as a zoning lot. You could move the line, it could still have split zoning, and then there's a section that says the dominant zoning then could apply to the smaller section. So you wouldn't necessarily, if they were, if you moved the boundary line, you wouldn't necessarily have, you wouldn't necessarily have to go through a rezoning of that piece.
So if we split, say, down the, the current zoning district line, which is essentially equal to that back red line, the southern piece, the, the southeast piece would become MS, motor service vehicle?
Yeah, so if you, can you throw that?
Trying to find that.
Actually, yeah, go just-
That one shows it.
There, there, so.
Most dominant would comply.
So, the most dominant comply, so you would move that bond, boundary line here, down fifteen feet or twelve feet or?
Or potentially just take it all the way down to the south and make that all MS.
I think if you take it all the way down to the south, there was something about twenty-five feet. So I can email, we can, we could talk further about this, but I think that's a more practical.
Well, in terms of Mr. Souchers, um, thank you, Megan, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Um, in terms of, it's, I guess, anything in the world is possible, right? It's very, very unlikely that that southern triangular shape would ever be sold, because as you can see, it has no access. It has no access to Sashaba, it has no access to any road.
Right.
So it really is dependent on the adjacent development areas to provide access. And, and so therefore, we think that the shared access agreement, which is no different than the shared access agreement, that this BP station has with Tim Hortons, and Tim Hortons has with Mr. Hannah to get out to that road, uh, just like all the shared access easements across the street, um, they all provide that same level of security that if, if properties are, you know, uh, bought and sold, that they still maintain that easement. We also think that the restrictive covenants give the township all the, all the, um, strength in the world that nothing can be done to that property in terms of development or anything else, um, without, without coming back to the town for rezoning to whatever the appropriate zoning it is at that time with the site plan. And frankly, at that time, um, the planning commission and the township would have the opportunity to say, well, you know, thirty-six months ago, you built that, and we don't think there's enough parking, and, and we could address it at that site plan time as well.
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I just, I keep, easements keep changing. Is this two different, you know, parcels?
No, it's the same parcel, it has-
This line doesn't really exist, right?
It's a split zone.
It's a split zone.
Okay.
One parcel, two zoning.
Is that topography falling at the highway there?
I, I don't know what the origin of that split zoning is, it's kind of unusual.
Jason, do you know if the topography of that corner parcel, where it starts to fall?
Exactly where they've got a total survey here, but it does fall off.
And where it becomes almost u- almost unusable, as it's the slope to the expressway?
The steepest slopes are offsite south of the, uh, the south property line. Um, it, it flattens out a little bit as you get onto the property. They've got a, some contrast to show on C, C side line.
I would just feel more comfortable if the buff, if the, the lot, the easement line was lo- deep, low, low enough that vegetation could be planted in it, and then if that was a problem, then parking could be added to it later. I mean, really, I know that's not ideal for the petitioner, but that's-
Well, what, what, what you would essentially be asking for then is eighteen foot for future parking, plus some type of a buffer, you know, it, it essentially becomes almost that. What, what I'd like to propose is that we would put the buffer along the, the MDOT property line, along that, uh, southern parcel, and, uh, provide a landscape buffer there that would essentially then become permanent, because any future development would have a green edge at that point, as opposed to adjacent to, to properties that would have similar zoning and would be required to have a buffer.
What's the regulation, Jason, on planting in the MDOT property?
Uh, there, there would have to be some sort of encroachment agreement. I think the plantings would have to go on our, our-
Yeah, I'm not suggesting in the MDOT.
Right, along the edge.
I'm suggesting on, on that purple property, but at the edge.
I have a question too for you, Megan, really quick. Why is this, the, 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 the agenda says that they're requesting development of the property with the drive-through? Why doesn't it say it's conceptual and special land use that they're asking for?
On the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
I believe-
It just says that they're requesting development of the property with the drive-through as part of the town center district. Doesn't say-
That's a public hearing notice. So, um, consistent with past practice, that's how we always listed it. Um, yes, it's conceptual, but, um, that's consistent with, I've gone back and looked at every one of these that we've done for-
I just wonder, because it's just kind of what we're, what we're trying to get to.
Is it, is it fair to say that the public hearing is just technically for the special land use? That a site plan doesn't require site, uh, a public hearing?
Site plan doesn't, no, but the special land use is the public hearing.
Right, and so the, the, the notice talks about special land.
Now, instead of repeating it on the agenda as conceptual down below, we just combine it. It's done concurrently. Joe, you had a question?
Well, I got one more, a leading question, just as a, in approximation, you know? This, this, this line here really is coming down to provide that access road. So, I don't know how far it's coming down, and I don't know how far up landscaping will go that we talked about. What's going to be left in, in between here? Ten feet, twenty feet, thirty feet?
Well, the thought is, is if, the thought is, is if something else was developed on that southern parcel, it would share that road. So it would, you know, we wouldn't want to put a road and then another road. It would share that road. So if anything was built there, it would, you know, have cross-access with it.
But the fact that the building's one way.
Right, but it could-
You'd bring it around the front of the gas station?
Or potentially that, that road would, you know, the, the access road to north of Tim Hortons could continue down. Or perhaps it would go, you know, into a larger development to the west, we just don't know. But yes, that, the rear of the building is one way.
It's hard to picture a development going on that little lot and then somehow tying into this parking lot, you know? As an access road.
That, that lot is the whole lot, it's, the colors are a little deceiving.
Right, but I wouldn't, I mean, I can't imagine that we would ever approve the southern property to ever access the mobile station or the BP station as a means of egress.
That is exactly what the-
Because this condo development is already specifically shows the, the road north of Tim Hortons, following the wetlands, all the way down the hill, and to the back of that, it was never intended to stay along Sashaba. The, the plans clearly show it going all the way to the back northwest corner, and everything feeds northwest. I wouldn't be in favor of even thinking that eventually we're going to start swinging stuff up into the gas station service drive area, you know? Because that's not what the intent of this development was when it was approved.
Um, then trustee Morocco, you, what the applicant is proposing is that there's a cross-access easement at connecting to the southern portion of the site, I believe, where that drive is right now? Or, I mean, it wasn't marked in the plans that we reviewed.
Wait, wait, let, let me be real clear. What we're proposing is that the driveway encroach onto the southern parcel by approximately twelve feet, and that there's a shared use gre- agreement so that that parking lot can essentially straddle both properties. We have no plans and no speculation and no concept in the back of my mind of how that might use. And I completely agree with you, but I think it's real speculative for me to say, yeah, we would or would not do that. Just it wouldn't be reasonable to direct all sorts of traffic to there. But, you know, you have to agree that there's a very seldom-used access agreement between the Tim Hortons and the BP station now. And so that's all I'm suggesting, is that sometime in the future, you know, there might be some type of, uh, hey, I can get from A to B that way. But, um, you know, any type of substantial development would go to the west, and, um, that's, you know, my opening statement was that that, uh, new driveway would somehow be adjusted to accommodate that.
Or eliminate it, reroute it.
Well, we, I said I wouldn't eliminate it, but I might reroute it. I mean, that access would always be there.
I, I just, I, the traffic flow, i- if, if that southern parcel ever got developed, and people started using that road behind Tim Hortons to access the, and then, and then behind you.
to access that southern parcel, I think it just creates all kinds of traffic flow issues with your drive-through and everything. It just.
Well.
It really concerns me that that's gonna be what happens when that southern piece gets developed.
Mr. Scarborough, I, I, I think what will happen is that, and, and frankly, the planning commission can, can orchestrate it this way, is, is that what will happen is a larger plan will come forward that considers one or several uses on the balance of those properties. And those, the circulation plan for all of that will tie into that, uh, Tim Hortons perhaps go west, perhaps go north. There'll be traffic studies for whatever those uses are, there'll be circulation plans for the, whatever those uses are. And I think that's the point of us saying for the time being, for the uses that we are proposing, that, that, that this is what we believe is a very reasonable solution because it, it provides safe access, it provides access to the north easement road. Um, and it limits, absolutely limits our ability to do anything else by placing a restrictive covenant on it until we come back to you for an actual plan that would, would have more.
So, Megan, w- we could put a restrictive covenant that said?
The applicant can put a restrictive covenant on the, their.
Which we've offered to do.
To put a restrictive covenant on the property to the south.
All right, maybe I misworded, we could require him to do that.
No, he has volunteered.
Well, he's volunteered it, and then I think you could make sure that any future owner does that by making it a condition of the special land use.
And that covenant would require your drive aisles to be constructed in such a way that, two things, that cars could not access the southern parcel and the southern parcel could not access the gas station. And those drive aisles would never be used as cross-access.
To the south, you mean?
Yeah.
Not, not necessarily to the west?
Well, what, what we're, have offered is that we would have a shared use access, two, two separate things. A shared use access to allow the driveway to go onto both properties and, and.
Well, let me stop you right there for a minute. See, that's what I, shared use to me implies that people on both parcels can cross both ways.
Well, but, but it is, you, you bring up a tricky thing. People on both parcels can use it, but there are no, there is no use on the southern parcel. We're, we're voluntarily restricting it until we come forward with something that gets your approval.
I have to look at it as if next week, somebody's gonna come to me and ask to rezone that parcel. I, I, I appreciate your effort, but that's gonna happen someday. Might be six months, it might be in ten years.
Well, let me ask this, Megan, are we able to, um, put a road as we've described and term it something other than shared use, just a single use, uh, wh- however you want to term that, simply to allow the, the, uh, modernization of the BP station to happen as it's been proposed? And then if and when, uh, larger site plan comes forward, um, the circulation, the traffic movements, everything else at that point? You know, our, our goal, I think, is aligned with yours. Our goal is to allow this, this project to be modernized, to allow this building to come forward and really can, get a complete makeover, all the utility upgrades, everything else, and with the understanding that we're right in the same boat with you that, that we don't want to open up a precedent or a Pandora's box that would allow us or someone else to do anything in the future without giving the township some teeth to say, wait a minute. So, we, we voluntarily have offered a restrictive covenant. Maybe I've confused it by calling it a shared, maybe there's such, such a thing as just a, a use easement, I don't know. Uh, but you tell me what our options are.
Um. I think, so, what I'm hearing collectively from the planning commissioners is a concern about the development of the parcel to the south and how, uh, driveway that's encroaching on that could be possibly used to facilitate future circulation between the sites. And that they very much don't want to open that up without some sort of mechanism to look at that. I think what you proposed in concept meets that, but I don't think that we've all seen the language to do that because from my, my understanding is that you were saying that there would be a shared access easement, so you're easing the rights on the property to the south, that the property to the north has exclusive rights to that pavement. But, so that they are sharing it over the parcel lines and that that easement will remain in force until such time the southern parcel is developed. And at that time, the circulation plan and how circulation between the two sites would be approved with that site, by the, by the township at that time with the site plan for that southern parcel. Am I hearing that in the back?
Frankly, I think you should get a law degree, I think that's exactly right because it allows us to do what we want and it allows the township complete control. Frankly, the township always has control cause of their, cause of our site plan process, but you have added control with a voluntary restrictive covenant that would, you know, could say, until the, until the future site plan is acceptable to the, to the township board and the township planning commission. It's probably a good time for me to say, to, to, to state that what we are asking for tonight is conceptual site plan approval. And that details like this, in my opinion, are exactly the feedback that we take at a conceptual and say, boy, before we get to final, we gotta work this out, we have to not only work it out with ourselves, we have to work it out with the planning commission, with the subcommittee, with the township attorney. And so, again, Mr. Soucher, I, I, I think we're in agreement and I think I understand the concerns. Whether or not I termed it right, whether or not there's a better mechanism, I'm not sure. But, but, you know, you've got Mr. Hannah's word, my word, and based on the approvals, complete authority to restrict us from doing anything else until that comes forward.
Okay, and just, there's also the concern about the landscaping that was proposed to go abutting that drive and, so, you know, but as you said, this is conceptual, long as you know that we have some issues with that.
Yeah.
You guys good? I think, maybe I'll open the public hearing.
You can, yeah, if you want.
Uh, well, you, you have something more to say on that topic?
No, I mean, I'm not good with it, I'm just, I'm not trying to put a public hearing.
Okay.
I still have concerns about the southern line here, you know, for sure.
Okay, all right.
Chairman, why, why don't we get that concern out of the way before we move forward?
We need public comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
I'm all good for more input.
Yeah.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. Any comments, uh, from the audience on this project?
How big is that site?
Do you?
That southern piece?
We've asked it.
You zone service two, how big is it? Nobody asked it, I thought the question I had.
Mark, you gotta at least come up and ask it, please.
Mark Newsom, ninety-four ten Ortonville Road. Does anybody know how big that purple piece is? Acreage-wise, square foot-wise.
The southern side?
The one that's zoned service two.
The whole parcel is one acre.
Office service two.
The whole parcel's one acre in size.
The combination of?
That's what I, that's what we have here in our property system.
Okay.
It's one acre, one acre in size. The line basically from that, that split zone line is about a hundred and fifteen feet. I just measured on GIS, so.
Okay.
Up and down, okay.
Okay.
So, more or less, with it being on the edge like that in the buffer zone, it's a half acre, correct?
Yeah.
Or not?
Roughly half acre, I would say.
A developable half acre.
Well, at least in the front half, it's probably about a half acre, give or take.
Okay.
Plus or minus.
Okay, anybody else in the audience have comments on this online?
Just the petitioners are online, that's it.
Is the applicant online have anything they'd like to add? Doesn't sound like it, okay.
No, I'm good, yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Why don't we move on to any other issues? Let me come back to this.
I'd like to talk about the overlay district requirements because I just, I don't, I understand the intent of it when we did the Sashaba quarter, cause I was there when it was created.
Mm-hmm.
And the, you know, residential movements along the road and parking in the back and the whole thing, which certainly doesn't apply to this site. So, two things, I don't want the, I don't want the petitioner to waste money on features that make no sense to put them right there at the off-ramp and a super-high thing that could be a little bit moved off of it. So, that's one, just to throw money at it, I don't want to just waste money. I'd rather spend it on buffering or something that would actually be usable or a safety path that goes down the grass area towards the fast food restaurants that's off the parking lot, that has its own route like we did over at the hotel across the street and made them run it along the off-ramp, you know, to eventually connect over with Walden someday. You know, not that this would go anywhere, but it would go, it is a path to the back phase, it is a path to the restaurant. You know, that's just one, you know, one idea. I, I, I just think that throwing bike racks and, and seating areas out there with, with, I mean, it's always bumper to bumper right there at the off-ramp, it's always busy, it's not conducive. I'm a little disappointed that with this, with two restaurants, there isn't like a patio, you know, somewhere nice to sit outside away from Sashaba, which is really busy, you know, which would have been nice. And, uh, with this detention pond drawn on this lot that's only a hundred and fifteen feet deep and then the taking of the property for the thing and then, you know, it just seems like, we're cutting ourselves short by not take, having them take more of that land and buffering this better and, and making it, uh, even if they don't put the parking spaces in, that could be a green space or an area where people eating could, you know, could sit out there if it had a little bit of buffering around it or something, you know, right outside the, the restaurant, you know, across the escape route possibly. We're not, but just.
Like where the right-hand tree is or?
It just seems like we're doing what we typically do, which is we jam a lot of stuff in and we're just, it's, we're just not getting the, the most amenities and the, the best that, uh, that we can get. And I don't want to just waste money out by the road if it doesn't, if, you know, if it doesn't make sense just to do it, you know what I mean?
I zoomed in on that one thing, there is no tables or anything slotted for that little rectangle area. It says bike rack and sign and, uh, you know, sidewalk, but it doesn't.
Well, they're not gonna park their bike there and then walk to the gas station, they're gonna ride their bike to the gas station. That's why I said maybe a sidewalk from Sashaba down that green sliver around the parking lot over to a crosswalk that goes into the fast food restaurant or lines up with the front sidewalk along the building, does get pedestrian traffic from Sashaba to the building, only walking across the escape route and the drive-through lane, you know? Which they're stopped at, you know, that, you know, typically, so, does that make sense?
Say that right-hand tree is at the bottom there?
Mm-hmm.
That could be like a, like, say, a patio area there or put a crosswalk right there, is what you're saying?
Just seems like a lot of effort to save this hundred-foot long, this hu- this one-acre parcel, especially if it could be later, the balance could be later used as detention.
Well, that's what I was getting at, to, you could use a little more of that property there and then move the detention, um, uh, to the east onto this lot, that would make the other lot more fully usable.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A few things, um, I, I agree with Mr. Morocco, um, you know, in different areas of the overlay district, it is nice to have some of these in front of Starbucks and so forth. Here, I, I tend to agree, I don't think it makes sense. I like the idea very much of extending the safety path on the inside of the M dot right-of-way, you know, on our property and extending it there and, you know, ultimately potentially keeping, you know, connecting it, going to the back. I think adding a patio there with a safe striping, uh, crosswalk across the driveway, you know, heading north to the, uh, fast food makes a ton of sense. So, we certainly are open to that idea and shifting that, you know, overlay requirement and I think in a more useful, creative way and, and, you know, still keeping the front landscape well, but not necessarily expect people to sit out there, I think that makes a ton of sense and we certainly, uh, would include that. If it helps this commission, um, help us move this forward from conceptual and really drill down and solve some of these issues with you, uh, before we come back with planning, what we can do, um, we've just been communicating with our, with our client team, is agree to join the front half of that, that property, the part that I guess is, is, uh, C two now or OS two?
OS two.
OS two, connect that to this property, uh, at least, at the very least, land bank some parking along that southern area. If not, install them, we think they could be land-banked and converted later. That would allow us to stretch a sidewalk or a safety path towards the restaurant, put in a small patio eating area there with some landscaping around it and potentially have some, um, you know, land bank parking spots if we need those in the future. And then we'd also agree to doing some landscaping along the, uh, M dot, uh, fence line to, uh, add some additional buffering there.
Megan, you said you needed to look at the rezoning implications of that?
It would become MS.
I think they're more restricted roles.
If they did the whole parcel to the south?
I, I think we'd need to look at that, but I think what we could do is work with the applicant in order to deal with the zoning on that. If, if you're saying for conceptual.
Yeah.
You would say that that portion, and I, I don't think, uh, we would have to look at the acreage to see, but I think that's about a half acre, the site is.
It's, it's roughly about an acre, maybe a little bit less, I think.
So, I, I would say in concept it would work, but, um, we would really need to, I, I can't say for sure right now. We need to look at it in a little more detail, but I think that can be done in between conceptual and, um, preliminary, and final site plan. Also, just to be clear, you're not asking for a special land use approval tonight?
We're, we are not, I thought that's what the public hearing was for.
I, I don't know, that's what the public hearing is for, but.
Oh, yeah, no, very specifically, we're asking for, and we, we want to move forward. And to me, a special land use approval tonight tells us that the uses are acceptable. It tells us that they are acceptable, you know, really for your three tests within the overlay district, that a drive-through is acceptable and that fast food is acceptable. By having, I think the way the ordinance is set up, by granting us a special land use approval. It doesn't grant a site plan approval, it doesn't, it just, almost like, uh, other types of things, it just says, hey, the ideas make sense to us. We approve with this, uh, conceptually, we approve of the site plan. We've listed out a number of conditions here tonight that, that, uh, we won't, you know, that we expect to see at final, working with the planner, the engineer, and now the attorney, um, to understand how we would join these parcels, what they would, the zoning would become, how do we land bank, how do we change the landscape? That would all be done. But with the knowledge of granting a special land use approval, which is really what the public hearing is for, it tells us that, hey, we're not gonna go through all of that and then still wonder if the uses are approved.
Jim, are you, am I hearing you right, where you would agree to a special land use on the uses if we made it conditional of the assemblage of the property?
Yeah, I think that that makes sense, well, I mean, it, it, it's kind of almost one and the same in my mind.
Cause I can't, to make it a cleaner, give us more options at the, at the final site plan, gives us more land to work with, gives us more buffering to work with, gives us more options. We know that you may need to use part of that acreage for the retention for the other parcel as long as what we're trying to do works, you know what I mean? So, there'd be some latitude there, I just want to make sure we're clear on what you're, you're offering as part of it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you said anything different than what I was saying, yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
And then the only other thing.
What do you? What are you thinking? What are you, what are you saying that I just?
No, that's what I was, I think that then gives us the comfort level that we can work with you on the site to get it to be what we want it to be.
Right.
Opposed to not.
I just wanted to make, make sure you're clarifying that, that front OS2 portion.
Just a front parcel.
Because we're talking property and that's.
Talking about.
The zoning line demotation.
Just the OS2 parcel that's to the south of the MS. That's all we're talking about, not the balance.
There'd essentially have to be a split and then a combination.
Split at the zoning line and then an assemblage to the north of that parcel with the MS.
Which is essentially the rear western line of this property.
What combination?
We all on the same page? Okay. And then the only other hurdle that we have that I know of, that's not the only hurdle, but I mean, that I want to talk about before we go with the conceptual plan is the only right turn out, you're not, you're not in favor of doing that.
We don't think that, that the, the data warrants it, again, from a final point of view. We can continue to provide data, we can have our traffic consultant take another look at it. But I think just based on speculation, without a traffic report, it, it doesn't, at least at a conceptual stage, we still think that that's a viable option, given the fact that, you know, traffic flows a little bit like water and most of the people who are going north are going to quickly realize, hey, it's, it's a little better if I turn left, if I go up to the next entrance.
We would be requiring signage to say exit to Sashaba south.
Correct.
Go that way to go around, you know, or to Sashaba north, I mean. So, we could work on some of that. I just want, because the special land use is the, is the use, which is going to create the traffic problems.
Understood.
That the commission's on the same page, right Bill, of what, whether, personally, I'm not as hard on the no-left turn because I think the, 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 most people that are transient people are going to turn right to the highway and the people who aren't know, would know how to traverse it better. So, I'm not got, you know, I think.
Right.
Because you're talking about two different patrons.
Right. My kids are going to know how to do it and the person getting on the highway or getting off the highway is going to get back on it.
Right. So, they wouldn't be turning left anyway. But those are, those are my, those were my biggest sticking points. I don't know how everybody else feels, but.
Megan, you want to say something?
Um, no. Brian and I have been talking about the proposed split and lot, lot combination. Every, every parcel needs to have, every parcel needs to have frontage and access to a public road.
Public or private road.
Public or private road. So, the, if you took the front half of the parcel to the south, combined it with the subject site, then you would leave the back half, the back half would be an illegal lot because it doesn't have access.
How does this current parcel have access though?
Right.
Would you entertain a shared use easement?
But that doesn't count, uh, that doesn't count under state law.
But.
Put that back.
The parcel currently doesn't have access.
Couldn't the back half?
It's landlocked right now.
So, if I could, the, the original approved site plan for this whole condo development has that par, that parcel to the south accessing the service road that's proposed to go through the property. It wasn't ever proposed to go out to Sashaba. It was always proposed to go to the service road to the west in the blueprints. Am I right, Jim? It shows that road extension going down towards the retention pond and then everything feeds to that.
Yeah, I don't think it's definitive where it goes, but at least it would get down there to whatever's down there.
It goes and turns, I know on the draw of the original blueprints, it goes in, it turns at the wetlands and it heads to the southwest as access to the retention pond. That was its design. And then from there, it accessed the condo sites.
In the back.
In the back. Or to the front, or to the south, wherever it, it does. So, just because all those parcels are part of a bigger site plan that showed access to a road in the back, I think that could be the caveat that.
Yeah, we'd ultimately have access to that road once that road's built.
Right. So, if you put this condition on it and we then pursued that and found that it technically wasn't possible, what would have to happen is the applicant would have to, you would have to come back here for a special land use amendment.
Or combine it to that larger one.
Or combine it to that larger one.
Which without talking to my client, may be the easiest thing to do now, I just don't know.
Right. Um, okay.
So, is the best thing to?
Buy the whole thing?
It's conceptual.
Well, I think what you could just, just say is combination of this parcel, of the subject site and a portion of or the entirety of the parcel to the south. Because then you leave it.
Open.
Yeah.
But it's a condition.
That, that would, they volunteered that, then that would be a condition of approval.
Right.
The other things that are outstanding on our list and I know the engineer's list is the existing driveway being restricted to right-hand turn only, which you haven't discussed and the applicant has said that they would prefer not to do or not willing to do. And then, I think if you look at item three under observations in the first list on our letter, it says whether designated pedestrian walkway, I think you could just alter that to be a condition as designated pedestrian walkways between the safety plan and the principal building as well as between the rear and parking area, the principal building are required. And then. And then I think also you had another condition about that there would be screening, landscape screening of the headlights and stacking areas associated with the drive-through. Correct?
At least. Whether.
Along the property line.
Along the property line. I guess, I don't care where it's at as long as it, it does that purpose.
Joe?
Megan, if, if we go along with the right turn is okay at this point, you know, without saying anything else, could we change our mind at final site plan and say the data that they're providing in the meantime shows otherwise, you know, if you've come up with more.
The applicant is asking you to, to decide on the special land use. The special land use is where you have a discretionary decision and quite frankly, standards which would enable you to impose that condition.
Right now, you're talking about?
Now is the time, essentially.
Okay, that's where we're getting at.
Well, I do want to say to your defense that across the street, when we went right turn only, it was because of the rolling off ramp. It had unique conditions that made it impossible to turn left from across the road onto southbound Sashaba because of the rolling off ramp. That was fifty mile an hour dangerous. This is a little bit different than that. Although it's not ideal, it's different.
I appreciate that and given the fact that it's a northern exit, it has another. You bring up a good point, Mr. Morocco, in the fact that Sashba has, I think, two pork chops, you know, right turn directional, one across the street and then one down by Chase Bank. And both of them, in fact, I kind of laughed with, if you zoom in on some of the aerials, maybe not this one, but on, on some of my other aerials, you can literally see tire marks turning left out of Art and Jake's, which I think creates more of a hazard. Because if the, if, if Sashba traffic isn't expecting you to turn left and it happens at Chase Bank and it happens here and someone does it anyways, I think it's more of a hazard. I think the fact that people know it's a full intersection and the locals know that the north is a safer route or the easier route, I'll say, I think that solves the problem. I appreciate it.
Megan, question for you. I, I have a little problem with special land use because as you said, that's the discretionary part of it and some of these, I like all the solutions they're talking about, but they're not finalized yet and, and I, I'm a little reluctant. It's really a two-step process. It's special land use and conceptual site plan. Can we grant a conceptual site plan but not act on the special land use yet? I want to show these gentlemen, because I'm not comfortable with special land use, I, if the commission is willing, perhaps we can show them a gesture that we like the concepts that they're talking about. Let me, we'll let her answer.
I'm gonna, if you would give me a moment to refer to the zoning ordinance about that.
Okay.
Mr. Ottman, I think raises a good point in that the conceptual site plan is integral to the uses that are proposed. So, delay approving the conceptual does in some ways give a nod towards approving the uses.
Yeah.
And if you want to say more.
What items specifically, Bill, do you still have issues with that we couldn't make contingent or conditioned on a conceptual plan to allow a drive-through, you know?
No, I.
Because I agree, we got to put protections in place of what we're talking about of what they've agreed to do. We just, you know, is there any other items, you know, that?
I, 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 um, you know, well, there's some other things I want to discuss, but they're relatively minor. These are the big issues. I'm not sure if I'm clearing your question. I'm, I'm okay with, conceptual is just conceptual. It's not, that, to me implies there's still a lot of details to work out.
Yeah, I just want to lock down the conditions of the special land use, that we wouldn't approve a special land use unless they did what they said, they assembled it, they brought the safety path to the building. Just, those are really final site plan things, but we can throw them in there just so that we're clear, right, Brian, when they typically be final stuff?
Yeah.
Still, those have to move it around wherever if he wants to, but they just have to be present.
Yeah, they know what we want. I mean, it's pretty clear what we're trying to achieve.
You make the, you, we'd approve the special land use subject to those conditions.
Yes.
Tie it together.
That's why I want to put a comfort level on there. That's why I wanted to make sure we were crystal clear on what he was offering so that I didn't screw that up.
That works for us because without that, with the, hey, these are the conditions, we can't come back unless we meet those conditions. But with that conditional special land use approval, frankly, without that, it's difficult for us to do anything more because everything we do from this point is with the assumption that you're okay with the drive-through, okay with the uses. If, so, you know, to ask our engineers and our architects to spend a heck of a lot more money and move forward to get to those final site plans and know, not know if, hey, by the way, we changed your mind, we don't want that, all that work would be for naught. By giving us that conditional special land use that says, as long as you meet what we talked about, we're okay with the uses, now come back and show us the detail.
Yeah, no, you couldn't approve the special land use and not approve the conceptual site plan because in this article on site plan, it says, upon determination of the planning commission that a conceptual site plan is in compliance with this ordinance and other plans and regulations, the conceptual site plan should be granted conceptual approval. If it doesn't have the special land use approval, it's not in.
It's not a site plan.
It's not, it's not in compliance with the, with the, with the zoning ordinance. So, you need to act on both tonight if you're looking to approve one or the other.
Can we throw a list of other items on there just when we make the motion to, for him to just have on record of things we would be looking at too? Like the parking calculation justifications he said that he would provide, like the assemblage of the OS2, you know, parcel obviously is part of it. The land banking of the parking spots in that assemblage, the sidewalk for pedestrians from the parking lot to the building and then the safety path.
The landscape buffering.
That, from there, some sort of buffering to be determined on final. And then the overlay district amenities to be worked out or adjusted for this particular site, like stuff like that, just, I don't know, just wrote it down.
Like we didn't.
You know what I mean?
We didn't like where those amenities were, but we still want them. We just think they need a different.
Technically, I think we're still meeting overlay intent because we'll call the M-dot road frontage. Go along that.
Right, so it'd be along the road.
Well, at least along that fence area.
Wasn't there something about the canopy material?
The siding, that we weren't going to allow aluminum siding, but on, it's. The blueprint shows, says, so every, the one thing about your blueprints is that everything looks like siding and this one says brick, this one says block, this one says siding. But it's all, on our picture, it's just all horizontal lines, you know?
Yeah, that's why we did the rendering. So, it's actually, the metal is only that piece, this piece and this piece.
Yeah.
Everything else is black.
On the submitted blueprint, it just looks like siding.
Even the bottom, he was all limestone.
Right.
So, really we don't have much. We only have, only in the front, maybe around ninety percent siding, not charred. It's not siding, actually, it's metal panel.
Metal plating, right?
So, you definitely have those color renderings in here.
Yeah.
And I, I, I brought it coffee, so you'll see. I gave you all the percentage.
Thank you.
The whole combined, the front, the right, the rear and the left.
Those are your colors, Jim?
Yes.
And these are the color we're using for the.
I, I was going to ask you, if, if most of the colors, and I've looked at it in the Sashba district, it seems to be sort of a burnt red or a brown brick, something like that. Would you be willing to consider something that is?
I, I looked at that too and, and intuitively, I think, you know, we could all say, yeah, I think you're right. But when I look at, you know, anywhere from Tim Hortons to Culvers to Taco Bell to.
At least there's some exceptions.
Art and Jake's to the new medical building to the, you know, other than the daycare and the Secretary of State, I think those are the only red brick. I, for in terms of architectural style, I think our son is, is really one of the best, but I'll let you talk about that. But I, I, after our meeting, I've spent a lot of time going up and down Sashba thinking about it and actually very few are red brick.
On the north side.
On the north side.
Yeah.
Actually, my name is Kasan Abdur-Rahim from JV and Associates. I'm the architect on the project. So, actually, the colors we're using, the, the two grays, the lighter gray is kind of too beige-y gray and the dark gray is actually very traditional color. We use them a lot with the limestone. They're adding only the silver top for the panels, for the metal panels, just to give it some accent and give it, make it look like tower and give the building some character. But the whole thing is actually, we're adding the limestone at the entrance, at the bottom, and we have ribbon of limestone on the building just to give it that traditional look. Even though we use these colors, but the building still looks traditional, that has some kind of a modern look to it. And we match all the brick on the columns for the canopy. We put at the bottom limestone, we added ribbon limestone and we showed the darker brick. And we thought as a building, and lately we've been doing a lot of building like this, that just give it some kind of, it's good for the time and good for the character of the building and just give it nice look for the gas station.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would, I mean, I, that's kind of the colors we kind of chose. We talked to the owners and we felt like it's more comfortable for the building. And we can work with you if you have any comments or anything you want us to ask.
Thanks. There was, there were some other smaller items and again, I, these are all more tailored towards final, but just, all of them were raised by Megan in her review letter. So, rather than going over them, I just encourage you to.
Include them?
Yeah.
We, we've gone through those. I, I think they all are clear as well as Noah and Prouse's letter. Again, the only one that we'd like to not agree to at this point is that write-out, but I think that's been discussed and we'll provide some additional data and I think Mr. Morocco brings up some good points related to that and maybe creating a safety hazard if, if, if we were to modify that in some way. But the rest of the comments, Ms. Chairman, makes sense.
I'm okay with, with the write-out as long as you have some, I don't like signs, but some decent signage that says to go that way to Sashaba north.
I think that makes sense.
You go.
Mr. Chair, I would offer too that the road commission may weigh in on that same issue. If you choose to not take action on it, the comment we have about sending watermen across the front edge is going to trigger a road commission permit, so they may hear from another road committee and see about that.
Which is out of our control.
Which is out of our control.
And I, I said it, I think at the pre-meeting we had, your canopy, I'm not a big fan of those green, whatever you want to call them. I consider that branding and part of your sign. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I, I, that's. The green around the canopy.
Because it's BP.
Yeah, there's really, that, that was just recently updated and went through the township and so forth. There's really, that's part of, you know, not, not unlike all the other gas stations up in. you know, not, not unlike all the other gas stations up and down Sashba and across America, that, that, that becomes a branding requirement. And, you know, in terms of signage, we'll meet all the township signage sizes and requirements coming with those applications.
Well, I understand it's a branding requirement of BP, but there are examples around the country where those companies have relaxed their requirements.
Foregone to have if it's. Like for instance, Jim, would it be acceptable to have just the BP sun and not the, but you already put all, this is all just been put up?
It's all brand new.
It's already up.
I actually have heard as I sit at those various oasis points up and down Sashba, I hear people talking about how nice it looks.
Do you have any names of those people?
Mrs. Morocco.
Oh, my wife said, I don't doubt it.
It'll look a lot nicer once you break flag the beams or the support beams.
I have a question for Megan if I could.
Yeah, you might.
Megan, this, since we're making a, we're making a recommendation to the board because of the consent judgment, that's what you said earlier in the meeting.
So what I would say is that you can approve this special land use, you can approve the conceptual site plan, but then the final site plan is a recommendation to the township board.
Okay, so not at this level, but.
And just to elaborate, the township board does not need to approve the special land use.
No.
No.
Okay, just want to be clear on that.
But the final site plan, they do.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? You guys?
Just a question, the, the border on the, on the, I don't know what it's called. It's above the word tenant there on the, on the peaks. Is that like a blue color or is that a gray?
No, it's a gray color.
It's a gray color? Okay. It, maybe it's just me.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
You colored mine?
Maybe.
Anybody else? How many? Who's been taking good notes?
I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to.
Oh.
Megan, look and see if you're writing everything down.
I'm trying. I got a mess. I'm gonna be, it's gonna take a second, but I think I got it. Yes, Megan?
Um, I had some notes if you wanted them.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, so conditions that I've written down that you've discussed is combination of the subject site, um, and the, and the portion of the parcel to the south zoned OS two at a minimum or the entirety of the southern parcel. Two, a designated pedestrian pathway between the safety path and an entrance to the principal building. Three, readjustment of the proposed Sashba overlay required amenity to include a pathway along I seventy-five frontage with an outdoor seating area. Four, landscaping to screen the vehicles using the driveway. And then, um, five would be, um, pedestrian walkways, walk, pedestrian striping in the rear of the site to connect parking spaces to the principal building.
Are those legible notes you just read off or am I supposed to?
Um, I can bring them to you.
I have some of them. I wasn't gonna say it as great, as eloquently as you did, but I was gonna hit the points, you know?
You can tell me whether they're legible.
Well, we'll work through it. Okay, thank you.
I'm sure you include it.
See if we can read in the reports. I only write in cursive. I don't read it. Yeah, everybody else.
Their letters?
Yeah. I'm ready to make a motion if everybody's ready.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, you good?
Go for it.
I'm gonna move on PC file two zero two five dash zero zero two petitioner Isaac Hanna, uh, requesting special land use for fast food restaurant, drive-through and, uh, addition in the township overlay district. Along with conceptual site plan, um, taking into consideration first, uh, the recommendations and, and, uh, comments from Carla and Wartman's representative, Noah Canfrouse's, um, representation, uh, the comments of the commission and Brian Otten, the planning commissioner, uh, planning director. Also in combination, uh, that there would be a co, combination of the subject site and the portion of the parcel to the south zoned OS two at a minimum or the entirety of the southern parcel. The designated pedestrian pathways between the safety path and the entrance to the principal building. Readjustment of the proposed Sashba overlay required amenities to include a pathway along seventy-five frontage to an outdoor seating area and, and designated pathway to the entrance of the building. Landscaping to screen the vehicles using the drive-through and along the Sashba Road area. Pedestrian striping in the rear of the building to connect parking spaces to the principal building. Land banking, parking, um, on the, uh, assemble lot. And, um, I think, and, uh, just also that to provide their parking calculations for the reduction in the recommended, uh, parking per ordinance. For conceptual, that seems like good. Anything else?
Yeah, and the land banking, I guess, to me, that just needs to be outlined on the, uh, site plan too, on the final site plan. So we, so just talk about, to me, it should be shown where it is and how many spaces.
Show where potential parking would be if it's deemed necessary in the future in allocated area.
That would be dashed in there or whatever.
It's good for both of us, cause if two years from now we all agree, we need it, you already essentially have approved where it would go.
Yep, that's right.
I just want to make sure you're saying special land use and conceptual?
Yes, I did.
Okay, alright. I just want to make sure.
I did. Um, I also, I did add those, uh, comments. Mr. Ritchie, anyone else have anything that you think we need to put in on this?
Sounds good.
That's my motion.
I'll support.
Why don't we do a roll call?
Jason Vorsheim?
Yes.
Sam Morocco?
Yes.
Bill Scarborough?
Yes.
Linda Belling, she has Joe Suter?
Yes.
Ron Ritchie?
Yes.
Thank you.
In, in all sincerity, thank you. That was actually kind of fun. I appreciate the ability to work with the, with the commission and I know Mr. Hanna and our whole team appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Uh, next on the agenda is another public hearing. PC file two oh two four dash one four, Caleb, Caleb Dagger, uh, requesting consideration of a planning unit development amendment in order to change the branding of the former town center car wash. As I said, this is a public hearing. Megan, would you like to, um, go through your, um, review letter?
Sure. Um, the applicant was before you on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. They revised their plans, um, as follows. Um, they're resurfacing parts of the east weapons, east, west and south elevations in blue aluminum composite material ACM cladding. The amount of cladding is less than the previous proposal. Uh, they were resurfacing portions of the ground sign in ACM cladding. In the previous proposal, the ground sign was proposed to be completely covered in that metal. Um, they added a planet car wash sign on the west elevation above the car wash exit. They added a planet oil change sign to the west elevation, adding a planet oil logo sign to the south elevation and adding electronic messaging sign to the existing brick sign with still images. Um, there are a number of things that we flagged in our, um, report and so I'm gonna skip to the end, um, because we had specific things that you should provide guidance on and specific things that we felt needed to be part of any, um, approval or direction. Um, number one, the planning commission should provide guidance on whether the number of wall signs can be increased to three signs as proposed on sheet A one-one. The applicant actually had two signed proposals. One was in the kind of the full set, um, where they actually have five signs, um, on, on three sides of the building. They're only allowed to have signs on portions where it can be visible from the street. Um, so that would only be, um, the one facing Sashba and then the, actually the ones that, um, Brian has up right now, um, the ones that are on the screen. Um, they, there's some in the back with a pedestrian exit and whatnot. Those face that area where we wouldn't allow signage. Um, so we, the short story is they can only have three signs. They need to be a hundred square feet or less in combination. Technically, they're only required, they can only be allowed one. You can allow them up to three. Um, also, we, um, felt that the area color and style of proposed metal, metal cladding, even though it was reduced, um, may not meet the requirements of the Sashba Town Center overlay area district. Um, and so you need to give, you need to give the applicant direction on that. Um, if you were to go forward, we asked for a number of things. Number one, that the detail and locations of the tree protection during construction are provided on a revised landscape plan. I understand that they're not doing a lot in different areas, but even if you just have snow fence around it, prevent somebody from parking something under a tree that damages its root ball or tramples a bush or whatnot. Um, the landscape plan's revised so that there's graphic notes and representations of the number existing trees are consistent. We had a hard, tough time going from one to another to see how many were there. Um, and this is required by the ordinance that the electronic message sign area is reduced by, to no more than one point, no more than twelve point five square feet. They're only allowed fifty percent, um, of the overall area to be the sign. Um, and right now what's proposed exceeds that. I also want to apologize, um, our letter on page five and item three, that last sentence, probably fifty feet, fifty foot perimeter setback from the northern building, northern proper line, um, was a typographical error and I apologize for that being in there.
Thank you. Jason, your review letter was pretty cut and dry.
There's really not civil site improvements as part of this proposal, so the items in our letter were mostly administrative from the site plan checklist.
Okay, the applicant, uh, here, I assume that you?
Uh, my name is Khaled Dagger from Dagger Signs and Graphics. I'd like to go over some of the, uh, points that Megan, uh, mentioned, uh, particularly about the amount of signage. You know, first of all, we, we did reduce the amount of signs that were presented earlier. Uh, to my surprise that the signage facing the east, these are meant to be just like enhancement of branding and wayfinding so people know where the actual car wash tunnel and where the, um, you know, oil change, um, bays are, you know? Um, they're not facing any public street and they're not meant to advertise for, to the public other than people who are already, um, inside, you know, um, you know, the property. Kind of like if you go to a big store that has their brand inside as well. Um, as far as the, uh, we, we did also remove, um, so the signs facing the, the public street, uh, we reduced from one twenty-eight to ninety-nine square feet, which is under the one hundred square foot. And, um, also, uh, we did, um, um, you know, try to do improvements on the ACM to reduce it, you know, on, on, on the particular wars, you know, walls that these are on. So to showcase the brick, you know, on the top, the bottom and, and the sides of, of that wall. As far as the, um, the ground sign, if, uh, if the ordinance only specified twelve and a half square foot for the EMC, I mean, we would like to have, you know, the twenty square foot that, you know, the, um, that I thought the ordinance allows. But, um, you know, we're willing to compromise there if there's a need to. So we're hoping that you would approve these revised plans and, um, so we could proceed with this.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's open the public hearing. This is a public hearing. So I will open the public hearing. Anybody out there of the two people in the audience? Anybody online? Anybody still on? No? Alright. Public hearing is closed. I guess I'll open it by saying I for one. Um, I may, I see five wall signs. Um, you can call them directional if you want. To me, they're wall signs. Uh, in my calculations, um, well, not in my calculations, in your calculations, they total a hundred and sixty-three square feet. And I don't agree with some of your calculations. The one on the bottom there in the, um, gable where you have the logo above the planet. I, I, it's my interpretation that the way to measure that is the width of the total worthage times the height of the two of them together.
It's the outermost that is, yep.
Yeah, and that's not the way you did it. You, you, you incorrectly measured the circle. You did width, you penalized yourself there. And then you, uh, added the rectangular dimensions of the, of the rectangle. Regardless, five wall signs and roughly a hundred and sixty-three, thirty square feet. I cannot support the blue cladding on the, the walls or the ground sign. Um, I, I, it would be my preference or my desire that you meet the, uh, ordinance regarding the monument sign. And, um, some of the other more finer details as far as the, uh, speed of the change of the monument sign and stuff like that. And it is, my understanding, there's been a lot of stuff done on this site that is not reflected on the site plan, like the construction of, I'll call it a toll booth that has inter, is constructed in the drive aisles. We have no way of being able to assess how that affects the ability of the fire department to service, services property. Um, and my understanding, there's been other things done. So it would be my, uh, request that you take this back and you correct the site plan and you, um, correct the signage. That's mine.
I've got, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Jason, go.
I think, I think this, sorry for my name. I think this actually is against the ordinance because it covers a window and, and part of the, the zoning ordinance says you can't have a sign that covers a window. It's not displayed as a window, but I'm pretty sure there's a window behind this, just like this. And this is the, this is the front. This is the front?
Yes.
There's a window here.
Oh, I, I was gonna say this one here, I, I believe exceeds the four to one ratio requirement.
The four to one ratio, okay?
Yeah.
Ryan?
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, got off, uh, thought a little bit. I agree that you're only allowed the three wall signs and they, uh, the total is a hundred square feet. And, uh, um, I guess I was gonna bring up the same point that we talked about that, you know, the measurement, it's, it's the, it's the total width and height of the, uh, of, of the combination of the signs. So it's like the one, uh, main sign where you say it's forty-four feet or something like that. It really comes out to be about like, uh, fifty-three feet or something like that for the, for that particular sign. And the other one where the blue cladding is, I guess, I, uh, we talked about having that on the building before. I guess I'm not in favor of having that, the gigantic blue cladding that I, I would say that it, it could be, uh, a background to that part of the sign, uh, where that one is, if that's the planet oil changer, if it's just because they plant it. I can't read, uh, the print right there, but, uh, you know, it could be an outlining of that, of that shape and size. But, uh, I guess I wouldn't, uh, necessarily consider, uh, you know, that whole corner of the building be clad. The electronic message board, I guess this scares me because they're showing images and everything else. The electronic image board, the max it could be is twelve and a half feet, square feet. And, uh, you're showing that, uh, much larger than that. And, uh, and it looks, say, it can only be, uh, white letters on a back background. It's a messaging board, not a graphics board, so. That, that's my thought on the, uh, signage. I guess on the, uh, uh, one thing that you provided the last time, which you took out of your package totally is the, uh, uh, site layout. You have the existing site, uh, as it was, but you took out the page that showed what improvements or changes you were gonna make. And, uh, and maybe you took that out because you already went ahead and did all those changes. I don't know, but, uh, it's like, to me, uh, there's two or three things, like there's lighting that you added to your building. Uh, there's no lighting, uh, page for your plan that shows what lighting you do have and whether or not the photometrics, whether you keep all the, uh, light on your own property or not. And like I say, you've added wall lighting, uh, on the outside of your building.
I, I'm just representing, you know, the sign company here. You know, I'm not the owner of the property and I'm not aware of, you know, these electrical or even the, the toll booth.
On the side of the building, there's at least five, if not six lights, wall lights that, uh, are not down, downward directed. They're, or they're flooding the whole property. So to me, that was, those were added lights that, uh, weren't mentioned in any of the site plans. or anything that have already been installed, which violate our code. And the, I guess, the other thing that, there is no site plan layout for is the dumpster. The dumpster, there's a dumpster out in the parking lot. If that's meant to stay there permanently, I guess, that's not, I guess, to me, one of the things we allow. There was a dumpster enclosure, decorative dumpster enclosure already, dumpster enclosure already. So it's like, what are we doing with that? And I agree with Mr. Scarborough that with the, with the little island and toll booth and everything you put in, you know, how does that affect our emergency vehicle circulation as well? And even bypass, you know, we made the other car wash put in a bypass, which that island takes away from that as well. Then there was one other thing was the, well, the vacuum, basically the lighting on the vacuums and there's lighting on top of the pay booth. It says pay here or whatever. But none of that was shown again on the, to me, you need to have an electrical page on your site plan to show, you know, what electrical either is current or you're adding, you know, to your property as well. And any light that you have, you have to show that in the lighting plan. And what, there's basic requirements in the township for Kelvin strength and everything else. And that's, that's the wall lights that you added are much, much brighter than the maximum Kelvin that we allow currently, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, Mr. Ritchie points out the fact that it's thirty-five hundred Kelvin that those light, those wall packs were installed. The ordinance also says that anytime you install new lights in a commercial application, you have to submit a photometric plan with the fixture details. So you can take that back to your client that we need a photometric plan if he's gonna add lights. And wall packs have to be shielded if they're gonna be installed. Shielded and downward facing. So just wanted to add that.
So all lighting on the property is downward directed. You can't have it shining straight out at any point.
Anybody else?
I'll just say quickly, I feel kind of bad that he sent the sign guy here. And they're not here to defend some of the stuff that's gone on over there. But I think that I'm on board with you that we need to have an accurate depiction of exactly, because I saw pendant signs being put up in front of the bay. There's all these new menu board signs that are going up. There's a lot of stuff that happened on that. You're just roped into it, you know, unfortunately. But the actions and behavior of the, of the owner of the, of the car wash makes me think that we need to have him provide documents of now what does, what exactly is on this site at this point, because it changes by the day. And we typically regulate message board signs so you can't see them from the road or that they're digital. This structure, you know, for the payment thing. The signs is the least of the issues, but it's hard to determine whether or not we can issue more signs without knowing what now is on the site, so.
I just want to make it clear that the site plan, so this is my first, right? This is the first time when an occupant has built structure, a small structure, and made changes to the site plan. I want to make sure that, do we get to approve this now after it's been built? Like, where I'm going is, this is the site plan I want to see, but I want to see all the new additions and I want to see a request for each of those new additions. Normally that would become a request before the things have been built. Like if they submit something that's already been built, nobody's approved that from my knowledge. So I, we want to make sure that what's being displayed, someone needs to come and say, hey, what do you think about this, right? Does that make sense? After they built it, they're gonna give us a site plan that we no longer have jurisdiction to say what we think about it. Like, does that make sense? Am I lost here?
No, you absolutely have jurisdiction. The applicant should have asked permission. Instead, they've set up a situation where they may be asking for forgiveness instead of permission. The planning commission is within its rights to demand a site plan that accurately portrays everything that has been put on the site.
Right.
And then is proposed for the site. That, and then any permits should be restricted until that time.
That's what I'm looking for. And I do want to call out that Google Maps, I don't have a picture of it. If you go to Google, you can see it clear. There's a window above the exit to the car wash, so.
The sign is covering.
We don't have the authority to approve a sign over a window. That can't even come before us. That's just in the ordinance.
That'd be a zoning board thing.
Yeah.
Did they get permits for any of the changes that they've already made?
No, I talked to the building official about it. He went over there and the booth wouldn't require a permit at this point. And the concrete wasn't enough concrete to trigger the permit for the concrete.
But it required electrical permits.
I believe so, yes.
So you're saying the booth does not require a permit?
A building permit.
It requires?
No, it certainly required an electrical permit. I believe you may have applied for one, but I have not, you know, I haven't seen it to be able to prove that. But at least a conversation with the building official would have been the right thing to do from the get-go if you had plans to change things. You know, painting trim is one thing, but altering the parking and the site arrangement is a whole nother thing because this is a planning development and you can't alter anything without planning commission approval. So, you know, putting in the booth, it may not require a building permit, but certainly the planning commission needs to weigh in on that.
It requires a zoning permit.
Yeah, well, it's zoning compliance through approval of the planning commission.
Right, and that's what I was saying.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted, I guess, what I was gonna add is that now that he's put a raised curb island, you know, where the pay booth is, that may alter the site structure for our safety vehicles to pass through there. You know, might even require a removal of the island and the pay station.
If the fire department needs it necessary.
If needed, so.
Because they removed the signet, you know, they were gonna have the kind of canopy looking thing, the bar. And the fire department required them to remove that.
They installed another one. There is actually one physically there right now.
Yeah, and directional signs are allowed, four square feet in area and four feet in height.
Yeah, those are unregulated.
How many?
There is not a restriction.
There's no permit requirement for directional signs.
It should be showed on the site plan so we can.
But it needs to be provided in their sign package.
Excuse me.
Belinda?
I'll just make one positive comment. The blue cladding, I think there is too much of it, but it looks like they're in panels. I don't know if you could make it two panels so there's more like a stripe behind that planet, the name of the planet car wash, and remove the top and the bottom. I don't know if that would be approved or not, but it would be less blue cladding and you would still have sign there.
Joe?
I was just gonna say, somebody mentioned that the blue for the background behind the sign would be good, but the rest of it isn't good. I forgot who said that.
Well.
I feel the blue is the sign.
I do too, and I, yeah.
The sign is the size of the blue, you know, in my opinion.
And just to be clear, if he does reduce it to just be what we might consider a backing, then the measurement of that sign because comes, becomes the measurement of the blue area.
Right.
To be honest with you.
I think it should be now anyway.
It's almost like part of the logo.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, the cladding is part of their branding. Now, you know, if blue is a big issue, even though, you know, we brought to your attention the MSU Credit Union has their green cladding on their building. And that's not, I don't think that was considered part of their signage and that far exceeds, you know, your maximum for signage. But that is, but if this is a big problem, I think we could, we could change that to a different color since, you know, silver is their other color. And I've seen, just driving up here, that the Genesis Credit Union has a whole wall of silver ACM. I think that, you know, they're willing to compromise. And also about the other issues just related to what I do here, which is the signage. You know, the signage, you know, we're fine reducing the signs to three signs and being under the hundred square foot and going with the other notes, you know, that you mentioned about the four to one ratio and not covering a window. We're okay with these, you know, if that would resolve, you know, the issues of what we're applying for, you know, the ACM and the signage. I will bring to the attention the other issues that, you know, that you guys highlighted, which is the, you know, the booth and the lighting and whatnot. I could bring that to their attention, but if, 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 you know, what we applied for and what, you know, we're willing to compromise for is approvable here, I don't know how, if there's a different way to deal with other issues, you know, you know, I don't know, warning or violation so that they could, you know, correct these other issues. I think that that would be fairly be, you know, what, you know, the issue, you know, we're applying for a sign and cladding and all of a sudden I'm facing other issues that, you know, that are being thrown here in my way. And we only have, you know, a short window, a few months to work on these things, you know, during the summer. Would that be possible?
Right.
If I can just point out, what your client applied for was a minor PUD amendment. That cover is more than just signage and branding. It's, this is more than that. It encompasses the site plan. And since they've made changes to the site plan, that's now included in the submission. And they've submitted plans as part of the sign package. So the sign package is just half of it. The other half was what they submitted as a, I guess you want to call it a landscape plan, but I, you know, I don't know. It's kind of, it wasn't drawn that way. I didn't see it that way. But my point is, is there's two components to this. There's site plan issues and there's branding issues. Just like down the street, we had Door Credit Union. That was a minor PUD amendment. There was site plan issues that we looked at and branding issues that we looked at. So it's, it's more than just signs. You're not here just for signs. There's more to it than what their application was submitted for.
And putting in the island and the pay booth and all that type of stuff, you're actually changing almost the use of the property. And that's, that's one of the things that could even trigger a major.
And the dumpster was, was moved after it was approved to be in that location.
Right.
And that's the easiest way for the truck to get to it, but it was moved.
And I'd like to comment on your, you referenced the MSU Credit Union and Genesis. I can't picture the MSU, but on the Genesis, the, that's a common color in our Sashaba Town Center Overlay District. And I see it as a feature to accent an architectural feature.
We don't mind.
We don't see it as part of their branding.
We don't mind switching to that color.
You don't mind what?
We don't, we don't mind switching the ACM to that color, to the silver, you know, metallic silver or anodized silver.
Honestly, with all the changes that have been made, I'd also like to ask them to beef up their landscape in the front by the signage because I know they said they weren't gonna change anything on landscape. It's gonna stay the same, but it could use a freshen up the landscaping there.
Is this in compliance, Brian? Do you know?
No, they cut the greenbelt trees down when they, first day they moved in.
Oh, so you see the branding better?
Yeah, they did the first day they occupied the building.
They cut the street trees down.
We need to require it then.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, we don't need to require that. I think the previous site plan required it, right?
Yeah, well, and I mean, their intent is, I mean, you can see it on the, they have an existing landscape plan, which is the original plan that was basically submitted by the previous owners when they built the site. So, but those three street trees, they're, they're about, you know, six inch caliper because they, you know, it's twenty years later since it was built and they're gone.
Why did they do that?
So you could see the front of the building.
That's part of the overlay district requirement, right?
Well, it's a greenbelt requirement in the landscape plan.
Yeah, let's move. You ready, Sam?
I'm gonna move on PC File two zero two four dash zero one four, petitioner Khalid Dagger from Dagger Signs requesting consideration of a planning unit development amendment in order to change the branding of the former Town Center wash and oil change that we postpone this due to the inadequate information of the submittal that did not cover the site plan, the landscaping and the changes to the site.
Photometric.
Including the photometrics, the installation of the pay booth, the additional monument signs, the street trees being removed. And that we postpone this to a date uncertain until the petitioner can submit a, a site plan and a package of the existing conditions that now are on the site since they've taken ownership.
And complies with our sign ordinance.
And how it complies with our sign ordinance and what the, from our comments tonight from Carl Owen Wartman and the commission and our planning director, Brian Ottman, on our comments about the signs to get the, the submittal for the signs to be more in compliance with the ordinance in the Overlay District of Sashaba Road.
My second.
Any discussion? Why don't we do a roll call?
Jason Borsheim?
Yes.
Sam Morocco?
Yes.
Bill Scarborough?
Yes.
Belinda Billings-Jaz, Joe Suter? Ron Ritchie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry you got dragged into that.
Next item is number three, PC File two oh two five dash zero zero one. This is a zoning ordinance text amendment revisions to section three point oh nine to add a new section E relating to the postage of signage for any form of rezoning. We've been over this a couple times and made some adjustments. And I think this is the final, hopefully draft. And the request is to approve sending this to the board for final approval. Anybody have any questions on this?
I have a question for Brian. Did we get some pricing or any of that stuff figured out?
Not yet, no, but we did get, we are working on a mechanism, code enforcement officer and myself on how we're gonna handle this. And we got some good suggestions from neighboring township on how we're gonna charge fees because this will have to come forward when I come to the board with this, hopefully, you know, this amendment. There's gonna be a procedure and process in place and the cost of getting the signs made. And then we would basically rent the signs for a significant fee. And they would install them and we inspect and make sure they're installed properly.
Okay, so my concern is that with our goals to align some zoning with the master plan, that we may be the first customer of these signs. So just taking that into consideration of how, so that there's, you know, so that we're thinking that way too. So we're the first ones to have to install them, you know, or whatever, pay for them or whatever. That's.
Have to sort that out, yeah, but, you know, when it's ourselves doing it. But, you know, for, for example, tonight, you know, the gas station would have had a sign out there, you know. But they would have paid for that sign and installed it themselves. They're not permanently installing these. They're basically a eight frame bottom to them so they stay upright and wind and so forth, so.
And they're reusable.
Yes, that's right. And they have to bring them back or else.
They pay for them.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, it's gonna take a few more weeks for us to kind of figure this routine out before I take it to the board. I don't want to take it to the board without knowing that procedure and how we're gonna handle it.
Okay, I just want to make sure that us doing it is equally in there so they're crystal clear that township initiated rezonings, we got a good plan for that, you know, too. I don't have any issues with the text or the language personally.
Anybody else? It is a public hearing, so I will formally open the public hearing. Any comments? I will close the public hearing. Yeah, I will close the public hearing. So I think we're ready. Anybody else do?
There we go. Our PC file twenty twenty five dash zero zero one, uh, zoning ordinance text amendment, uh, uh, to approve revisions to section three point oh nine to add a new subsection E related to posting of signage.
Word.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the master plan update. Megan had sent out, um, the updated master plan with her, uh, summary of, of changes. And, um, hope everybody had a chance to look at it. And, um, is there any questions? I have some, but.
I just got a question. I just, it's for Megan. I was just going through it the other day and I found two more little edit errors. Do you wanna know those or?
I think I may have found them. Pages one twelve and one one seven where it's proactive and there were, Rosak was.
Proactive.
No, it wasn't that one. It was, uh, there was a, ma- master was M A T E R in one spot. And, uh, oh, and I guess the other was in the zoning ordinance as well as in the master plan, where it was referring to the wrong chapter. Like something in six oh.
If it was in the master plan, yeah, I mean, I, I caught some typographical errors some other folks may have. Um, if you could send me those pages, then we can, I can update them.
They're, you know, not life-changing altering issues, but I just didn't know if you wanted to continue to field those if and when they're found. That's all. I'm not looking for, believe me.
Anybody else? Megan, on page twenty one, the first, if you follow your list of changes down, the first mention of page twenty one.
Yep.
Can you, I had a hard time finding that on this, that page. Do you have anything that points it out?
Which one are you talking about? This one that says the changed reference to previous master plans?
Yeah.
Um.
To twenty sixteen master plan?
Yeah, to twenty sixteen master plan, so.
Oh, I think I just saw it.
Yeah, I think it's at the beginning or.
Yeah, second paragraph.
Okay, and then on, how about page one eleven?
The Roac?
Yeah, that's probably just a minor thing. Don't worry about it.
It was Roac to Rosak.
Yeah.
It's crazy. Changed the names.
Um.
I'm just excited to move this thing along. That's what, that's what I'm excited about.
And do it again before we get to something.
I don't know about that.
Well, if you're excited to do that, then you would make a motion to recommend this to the township board for approval.
Yep.
You feel good about it?
Um, well, there is that one that I caught two typographical errors from when we changed Roac to Rosak. Um, and then Mr. Suter said that he found one, but I think if we correct those three typographical errors, I would feel, I, I feel good about it.
It's a lot of pages. There's gonna be a missed type word somewhere in there.
There's probably something we haven't found.
Yeah, that's true.
It's electronic documents, so even if we find something, can we, uh?
There's always such thing as the Scribner's error.
Did you make it?
You want me to make a motion? It's your ba- it's your baby.
I'll make it.
It's, it's your baby as anybody. Why don't you make the motion?
I'll make, I'll make the motion. We forward the, uh, opportunities twenty thirty five. Make sure I got that right. To, uh, master plan to the township board for adoption.
I second.
Is adoption or approval the right word or does it matter?
Adoption.
Jason seconded. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, Planning Commission annual result, or annual report. We're doing a lot of forwarding things to the board tonight.
Yeah.
Um, it's good.
We looked at that. I sent it out. We looked at it briefly last month. I sent it out, asked for feedback. Um, I guess everybody liked it cause they didn't get much, so now we wanna, um, have a motion to forward it, uh, report it to the board.
I'll make a motion that, um, Chairman Scarborough presents the twenty twenty four Planning Commission annual report to the township board at a future meeting.
Second.
Wait.
Wait.
I just, uh, in talking with, with our clerk, um, I think she was looking for kind of a formal sign off or approval. But I guess that mo- just, I wanna make sure your motion covers that, cause she's gonna wanna copy these minutes.
Why don't you amend it to?
Well, if we do a roll call, it covers it, right?
Why don't you amend it to include the language that we approved the report and ask Mr. Scarborough to read that for yourself.
There you go.
I'll accept that amendment. The, the Planning Commission, after reviewing the twenty twenty four annual report, um, was in agreeance that it was accurate and should be submitted to the township board at a future meeting for approval.
Second edit.
Who, who supported it? Jason? Ron?
Jason, okay.
Okay, Jason. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, next min- next item are the minutes. Everybody read them? Any changes? Brian got some from me.
You guys.
Yeah.
I think I could send a few, but.
Yeah, you did. I think you sent a couple. So they're writing.
Okay, all right, I'm ready for a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the, um, regular meeting minutes of February thirteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Support.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is item J, which is moved up, uh, zoning versus master plan. You know, we've been talking about this for a while. We had our subcommittee meeting. Um, we are, the, again, this relates to the number of parcels along Dixie that do not match, that are zoned, a zoning that doesn't match the master plan. Um, we are considering the concept, and I emphasize considering, we have to do some research, we have to talk to our consultants. And we, we need to schedule a date to do that. And if maybe, um, uh, Jason and Sam and I and Megan could stick around for a few minutes after, we could set that date. But the plan we're considering is to maybe come up with a totally new designation for the Dixie Highway corridor. Call it, I, you know, give it a name, mixed use, whatever. And because Dixie has a lot of mixed uses and designate that whole corridor that, and in conjunction with that, create an overlay district zoning ordinance similar to what we have done, um, in, in, in the town center. Now, maybe that might be part of, uh, expanding the P D O option, if I got them right. Um, or maybe it's a, I don't, I don't know, but either that or a totally separate overlay district ordinance for that. That would put some controls on, and, and give us some controls on different types of uses being developed um, in, in a mixed use concept. And so we wanna explore that. One of the first steps in doing that is to, um, it, it, one of the first steps in proceeding down that road is to rezone, I've got five parcels at the north end of, of Dixie. Most frequently known, one of them is the courthouse parcel or something similar to that. Um, that need to be rezoned. And as that is, um, yeah, that's the same, that's the same. Okay, there's two different pieces here. These are the parcels. Um, they need to be rezoned to O S one. And, um, being that that's a process, Brian, I got pictures of these if you wanna, um, Megan. Being that that's a process and takes some time, um, I am suggesting that we, the Planning Commission, just make a motion tonight to begin the process of rezoning, uh, the following par- parcels, and I have them listed.
Um.
Not saying we're gonna, we're actually gonna do it, but we're gonna begin the process of gathering the data and figuring out what we need to do.
If, I can suggest that you, the amendment, the motion, if you wanted to make a formal motion, is that you would begin to explore the possible rezoning of those parcels to O S two.
O S one?
O S one, sorry.
They want O S one.
O S one. O S one, that's what I was.
Well, and that's, if I can say something, so. Trying to get the underlying zoning aligned with the master plan zoning is our goal. Going on the record that we're pursuing that option. How we get there and what's the most logical rezoning for each parcel is yet to be seen. That's, I think, what we're trying to have a meeting on, hopefully, and, uh, uh, at the end of this month, you know, at a second meeting to have these discussions and figure out what the process would be to initiate the township rezoning to get us in line to put better protections in place from future developments, cause it's long overdue. Um, I think is, is the intent.
Yes.
Um, it's mi- you're saying it might be premature to, to call out specific things yet until we've done a, a meeting with exploratory conversation, which we wanna have in public at a meeting to, uh, you know, to, to tell, let everyone know what our intent is and work the bugs out of it and the procedures, I believe, with what it would take.
I would just soften the language, because when you say to rezone, that if someone didn't see that in context and looked at the minutes, they might think that you are initiating a rezoning, which you can do.
Understood.
Um.
But we're not there yet.
But you're not there yet, so I would say, again, to explore. Um, and then it's your decision as to whether you wanna designate a zoning district or that if you just wanna leave it open because you're looking at a, at looking at a process.
Do we make, I did a township initiated rezoning, but it was probably twenty years ago. You know, do we make a recommendation to the township board for that? Or does the planning commission have that authority?
What's the pro- what's the process?
I believe that.
I think you can initiate it.
I think you can.
The planning commission itself can initiate it, and then is there a final, like, gotta go through the board to do it?
Yes.
Still has to go through the township board.
Right.
And have the landowners been notified?
No.
No.
Is there a, uh, is there a process? I mean, is there of gathering information of, um, well, I, yeah, Megan, Megan or Dick did tell me that generally, one of the first things that they do is put together a, a consultant's analysis of the property.
Correct.
So what initiating amendment says section fifteen oh one, amendments may be initiated by the township board, the township planning commission, by petition of one or more of the property owners of Independence Township or by one or more persons acting on behalf of a property owner or owners of Independence Township. All proposed amendments shall be referred to the planning commission for review, public hearing, and recommendation before action taken thereupon, there, thereon by the township board.
But that sounded like you gotta have permission of somebody opposed to a township initiated.
Well, you are the planning commission.
It says, yeah, it says that you have the power, planning, township board has the power to initiate it.
Or a person.
Or a property owner or somebody on behalf of a property owner.
Thank you.
Well, and, and one of the reasons I wanna do this is because I wanna send a, a clear message from the planning commission to the staff and to the board that this is something we need to do.
And, and when is the property owner notified?
So when there is a public hearing, the property owner has to be notified by state law and everybody within three hundred feet. Um.
They'll get the postcard.
The.
We'll put signs up, right?
The township.
If I have a sign.
Maybe we need to wait till that sign ordinance.
Though recommend as part of your process to talk to those property owners.
How are we gonna do that? These are five separate parcels. Do we have to put one in each parcel?
Uh, well, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there.
Well, one of them's on the, uh, east side.
Okay.
The, the four.
A little more challenging.
There's four, and it, there's four on the west side, the four that are joining. And then I, I think the one is commonly referred to as owned by somebody who's pretty well known.
Uh, used to be owned by somebody prominently known.
Yeah.
Doesn't own any.
Oh, okay. I think that's the one. So it, I mean, if there is some moving reason why we shouldn't do that one at the same time, you know, that's.
What are they currently zoned?
Commercial.
Two of them are zoned C four, two of them are R two, and one is C three.
So Megan, I think the intent is to go, uh, let, put everyone on notice that we wanna put these protections in place for future development. The most vulnerable parcels clearly are the undeveloped ones. It's not specific to any one parcel, but it is specific to the corridor that we're trying to protect, you know? So we have to figure out, we just wanna get working on how, what's the best way to, to do it, you know? And it's long overdue.
Basically want it on record in case somebody comes in in the meantime.
Yeah, well, that's part of it to go on, you know, that was the intent to say, all right, that we're, that we're gonna start initiating, doing research on, um, aligning our underlying zoning with the master plan.
And I think that's fine. It's just, again, I would say that it's, you're beginning the process to explore it. You're not rezoning it.
That's fine. That's my intent.
And just for my sake, do you think these property owners are going to be on board with this or not?
I wasn't, not really concerned about that.
I'm just asking your opinion.
Don't know.
Well, I would say that it's, uh, in my opinion, the parcels are empty for a reason. Whether it's, they're zoned wrong, they're not compatible, it doesn't work to buy them. So we may not have pushback from some if we decide to change, you know, to, to look at zoning that would be more marketable and compatible.
Gives them more opportunities to do something.
You know, so it could be mixed use, multi-family, lots of things can happen on these big parcels that are still vacant. What we don't want, in my opinion, and what I've been pushing for, is I want it to be clear that we don't want a fast food restaurant next to someone's home. We don't want a gas station next to someone's home, you know? Clearly, the township board feels that way, you know? And that the longer we drag our feet, um, and leave this open, it's been twenty years that they've been, and, um. Yeah, this is the fourth master plan, I think, that I've worked on in my time in the township. And ever since I've been here, I think they've all been proposed to be something different. We just never got them there, you know? And it's, it's, uh, it's, I think it's time that we do some housekeeping, you know? Before we have to spend all of our money defending and fighting, why don't we just get them in line with what we would, what the township would like them to be? You know, it's kind of a, but doesn't mean it's gonna kill the homeowner's deal or make the property less val- uh.
Right.
You know, necessarily, uh, less valuable, cause they've been sitting there forever so far, so, uh.
Well, and, and.
You know?
The way I've worded my motion is to rezone them all to O S one. Now, uh, you know, we talked at the master plan about the possibility of residential in this area, so. And two of them are zoned residential. I don't, you know, we might end up deciding not to rezone those two that are residential because we might, might wanna leave that open. So we're exploring. We're not, and, and we might decide to rezone it to something other than O S one, but we're gonna explore it. And I meant this mention during the master plan. I was struggling with supporting, sending it to the board because I had a hard time supporting a master plan when you got a hundred and twenty parcels that don't comply with it in, in a four or five miles corridor. I don't know how long it is, but, but I can, I, I supported forwarding it knowing that we were working on a plan. And I should've said that during that time, but I slipped my mind.
I agree with you. It's good.
Okay?
Something's gotta get done eventually.
All right, I have it written up. I will make a motion, um, for the township to begin to explore the possibility of rezoning the following listed properties, which are located in the northwest end of Dixie Highway. of rezoning the following listed properties, which are located in the northwest end of Dixie Highway. Properties zero eight dash one nine dash three five one dash zero zero four, and zero zero five, and zero zero six, and zero zero seven, and par- parcel number zero eight dash three zero dash one two eight dash zero zero six.
But not limited to those?
Um.
Or you wanna limit it to that?
I, I guess that's open, I, I.
I would open it up.
To rezone.
I would do sections at a time.
That's what we were focused on the, our group of the north, the north, uh, the northern corridor, and then, um, prioritize as we go.
The undeveloped.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I'm good with this, just the.
It's a start, we can, I mean, it's just, uh, putting people on, putting stuff on notice, we can change it when we do our exploratory work and consult with the consultants. Just for on the record.
Jason?
All right.
Jason seconded it?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, folks. Megan, you got anything to report?
No, but thank you.
Oh, well, yeah, I, I counted, Megan, I counted about five wishy-washy words in that, in that, uh, motion, so it's not in cement, like you wanted.
Uh, let's see, discussion, anybody have anything they wanted to discuss?
I think it was a great meeting, got a lot done. Personally, I think it was, it was, worked out good.
Um, Joe, did you wanna say anything about your little subcommittee?
Well, I, I can only say that we haven't had a chance really to meet yet, but I did throw some, some points together and I distributed them out, so in the next few days, I'll try and contact, uh, our three and then get back a few on what we wanna do. The idea was to, to find some ordinance amendments that we thought needed to be addressed, prioritize them. Uh, Belinda has not had her chance to add some to them, Ron hasn't either yet, or commented or said, get rid of this one. Uh, but as soon as we go through that process, I'll get it back to you, and then we'll figure out step two and a half.
Okay.
Is that gonna be part of the next meeting also?
Can be.
Yeah, I, we have some temporary sign ordinance, uh, clarification of type amendments that we're gonna have to deal with.
Yeah, I've got that on your side, but very general, very general at this point.
We talked about that. Yeah, well, I'll get with Joe on those.
Well, what we did a minute ago was a result of, uh, my, and Sam, and Jason's subcommittee. Um, followed by, it was nothing new on Trillium, on the roof deck or anything.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just a reminder, we had talked about the concept of, or some explanation of brownfield development and, um, funding for that and stuff like that, just not.
For the county.
It's the county or the state, or is it a federal?
County.
County.
It's a county, open county.
They have their own brownfields for them.
Um, and anything on the pipeline you can mention, what, what are we looking at for our next meeting and?
Uh, one case.
Don't wanna mention it yet?
Is it gonna be on the twenty-seventh or the beginning of the next month?
Being, uh, norm, next month's normal meeting, basically.
Okay, and are we s- we good to have another one this month?
Um, should be able to, I just need to.
Twenty-seventh.
What's gonna be on the agenda?
I just need to check.
For sure.
Calendar.
The last, we talked about the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, so I, I have a clear, I'm flying back the day before to be at it, so, the, um, just for the record, you know, we basically, uh, what we've talked about is doing this housekeeping, Megan, you know, the second meeting of the month, so we weren't tied up with petitioners and working, uh, with the two committees, so the ordinance is that the, Brian has identified, the building department's got some, we've got some, there's new stuff in the thing, and then, uh, aligning of the zoning, and then, uh, that way we can have a, you know, uh, you know, hopefully in the next few months, we can get a bunch of stuff we've been kinda waiting to do forever cleaned up, and then, you know, hopefully by summer we can get back to just, you know, one meeting a month and have some stuff wrapped up, you know?
So, will we have stuff on the agenda for a second meeting?
I think a discussion with her on what the rezoning would be half of that meeting, and then the ordinance is Brian's got stuff that we wanna talk about, and, and then even if we don't have Joe's written or whatever, I think we should, we could go through and prioritize which ones we wanna have ready for the next meeting and start getting language together, and it might not be, you know, a four-hour meeting, but it's, it, I think, I personally have been pushing to have it so that we can finally get some of this housekeeping done, you know?
I could attend in person, and Dick Carlisle could attend virtually, um, so we could have his historical knowledge, um, especially when we're going through some of these parcels along Dixie.
I never thought about doing it again in April, not, but that fourth, uh, Thursday of April is the week of Easter, a lot of people might be gone, so.
Well, let's just do this one in March, and then we'll.
Well, let's see what happens.
March twenty-seventh.
I think the March meeting is gonna be the one that gives us, like, the meat at the next meeting, you know, that we would be able to start putting some things to paper after the next meeting.
I just wanted to bring it up, just, cause we were going to, you know, we might wanna fluctuate that week if we're gonna have the second meeting, because people might be gone, so.
Not many.
This is the twentieth, so.
I wish.
Okay, all set?
All set.
Motion to adjourn, please, add.
I'll make the motion to adjourn, or you're doing it?
Eight fifty-five, go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Sister Margaret?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Well, uh, thank you, folks.